Good evening. The September 29th meeting. Good evening. The gavel still being in one piece. Councilmember Rogers. The September 29th meeting of the Evanston City Council will come to order. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Jara Carice.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly. Councilmember Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Present.
Councilmember Isles?
Here.
Councilmember Nusma?
Here.
Councilmember Burns?
Here.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Here.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Rogers?
Here.
Mayor Biss?
Here. With a full complement present, we have a quorum and are prepared to do our work for the evening. That work obviously does not require the approval of virtual councilmember participation because there is none this evening. We begin with my public announcements and proclamations, of which there are four. The first will be for National Literacy Month. Whereas September is recognized nationwide as National Literacy Month, a time to raise awareness about the importance of literacy and to support programs that expand learning and opportunity for all. And whereas literacy is the foundation of personal dignity, civic engagement, economic mobility, and lifelong health, equipping individuals with the tools to fully participate in society and achieve their potential. And whereas local schools, libraries, community organizations, and nonprofits such as the Illinois Literacy Foundation play a key role in advancing literacy by raising awareness, expanding access to adult literacy and English language programs, and responding to the evolving needs of Illinois residents. And whereas the Illinois Literacy Foundation is committed to equity, collaboration, and the belief that every person can learn, working to secure resources and grow the capacity of literacy programs and strengthen the statewide adult education ecosystem. And whereas the city of Evanston is committed to fostering a culture that values literacy in all its forms, including civic, digital, health, and financial literacy, and to supporting efforts that expand access to learning for all people of all ages and backgrounds, now therefore I do hereby proclaim September 2025 as National Literacy Month in the city of Evanston, and I encourage all residents to celebrate the power of literacy, support local and statewide literacy programs, and help build a stronger, more informed, and more equitable community. And here to receive this proclamation, we have both Mo Khan and Ted Shabilla. So if Mo and Ted would step forward, I'd love to present this to the two of you.[172.01][172.01][applause]
Good evening, City Council. I just wanted to quickly thank you. My name is Mo Khan. I'm part of the Illinois Literacy Foundation. We are a statewide organization that promotes literacy services for every resident of Illinois. Today, 5 million Illinoisans read at only a sixth grade level. 5 million Illinoisans. And that's a terrible thing. That's something that all of us can work together to improve. And so, the Illinois Literacy Foundation, the way we think about literacy is not just the ability to read and write, but the ability to listen, to think critically, to speak, to express yourself, and to navigate the world around you, whether it's the healthcare system, nutritional literacy, digital literacy, civic literacy, something that is so needed in today's world. And none of this is possible without partnerships, without partnerships, without partnerships. And that's why we're so grateful to the city of Evanston for welcoming us here tonight, and we look forward to working with you in the future. So, thank you. Thank you, City Council. Thank you, Mayor Biss.[281.01][281.01][applause]
The next proclamation is for Ban Books Week, and I see we have Library Board President Tracy Fols with us to accept the proclamation. Whereas the freedom to read is essential to our democracy, and access to information and diverse perspectives supports an informed and engaged citizenry. And whereas Ban Books Week, observed annually, highlights the value of free and open access to information and draws attention to the harms of censorship. And whereas libraries all across the country, and especially the Evanston Public Library, serve as pillars of intellectual freedom, providing access to a wide range of voices, stories, and ideas regardless of personal beliefs or background. And whereas the American Library Association, ALA, and other organizations report a growing number of attempts to ban or restrict access to books, especially those written by or about historically marginalized communities, including people of color, LGBTQ+ individuals, and others whose stories are vital to a comprehensive understanding of our shared human experience. And whereas the Evanston Public Library remains committed to protecting the right of every individual to read, learn, and think freely, and works actively to ensure all community members feel seen, heard, and represented on its shelves. And whereas Ban Books Week serves as a reminder that the open exchange of ideas and the freedom to choose what we read are foundational to a healthy, vibrant, and inclusive community. Now therefore I do hereby proclaim October 5th through 11th, 2025, as Ban Books Week in the city of Evanston, and encourage all residents to celebrate the freedom to read, support their local libraries, and engage with books and ideas that challenge, inspire, and empower. And if Tracy would come forward, please.[391.13][391.13][applause] Next, we have a repeat for a really good reason. We read the Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation at our previous meeting, and in the intervening time, the brand-new executive director of Evanston Latinos, Ricardo Villalobos, has come on board and made himself available, and so I would love to once again read this proclamation and present it to Ricardo, and frankly introduce him to those in the community who have not gotten a chance to get to know him yet. Whereas the observance of National Hispanic Heritage Month started in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon Johnson, and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting on September 15th and ending on October 15th. And whereas the city of Evanston proudly acknowledges and celebrates the profound and enduring impact of the diverse Latino community and its vibrant heritage across our nation at both the national and local level. And whereas Latinos have made valuable contributions to our society as doctors, entrepreneurs, social workers, first responders, politicians, and writers, additionally, they have played an important role in advancing technology in the field of law. And whereas as a governing body, it is important for us to carefully consider the positive impact of Latinos on Evanston's culture and success, we must wholeheartedly renew our commitment to providing opportunities that will ensure the accessibility of the American dream for current and future generations to come. And whereas Evanston's commitment to creating the most livable city in America is exemplified by the presence of individuals of Latino descent comprising 11% of our population, this rich diversity is underscored by Evanston's first Latina city clerk re-elected in April of 2025. And whereas it is important to honor and celebrate the histories, cultures, and contributions of Latin Americans and immigrants whose ancestors came from Mexico, Central and South America, and the Caribbean, and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped Latinos as a people. Now therefore I do hereby proclaim September 15th, 2025, to October 15th, 2025, as Evanston Hispanic Heritage Month, as the official designated month for the city of Evanston's annual Hispanic Heritage Month, and call upon the people of Evanston to join together in recognizing and participating in this special observance.[579.32][579.32][applause]
Thank you so much again. My name is Ricardo Villalobos. As I've joined this journey here in Evanston, it's been over a month now, learning so much about this beautiful community and what keeps it going and why people choose to live here. My parents came to this country in the 70s, specifically my dad landed in Wrigleyville in the early 70s. We lived in one of the rooftop buildings that are now where you can watch a ballgame from, not knowing that those were going to be those. We navigated through Evanston a lot as kids because we thought it was like the most beautiful space so far, but so close to us, being city kids, being kids who grew up playing in the alley. My dad would take drives down the lake shore through Evanston, and we would see all the beautiful houses and the lawns, and it was always very dreamy as a little boy, knowing that that existed so close to us. So I'm here now, and I learned so much about Latino families that have migrated to the city, and we go back far, early 1900s, and there's such a deep culture of immigrants who came here and made a very conscious decision to land here. And then you ask and you find out for many reasons, the school, and the parks, and the beach, and the lakefront, and overall I think safety itself, the sense of I can walk out of my house and navigate and walk down the street, go to the park, and feel comfortable and breathe clean air and live something that I always imagined or dreamed of. So I'm here to continue hopefully working with you all to create those spaces for people as they navigate and they figure out, hey, I want to live here, creating spaces for them to feel safe to share and open and live their lives here, grow, and be part of this beautiful community. I thank you all for embracing me too, and I'm here to learn, and thank you all. This is beautiful. Thank you.[744.86][744.86][applause]
The final proclamation, I think no one is here to receive, although I also think it broke the record for largest number of councilmembers who requested that I do it. So if they're giving advocacy lessons, sign up. National Service Dog Month. Whereas we believe in the joyful transformative power of the human canine bond and inclusivity of all citizens, and whereas in the United States, 70 million adults have a disability, and only 16,000 service dogs from accredited training programs exist nationwide, and the need is growing. And whereas Canine Companions created the service dog for people with physical disabilities 50 years ago in 1975, creating a new kind of support for disability. And whereas Canine Companions is a nonprofit organization that enhances the lives of people with disabilities by providing expertly trained service dogs and ongoing support to ensure quality partnerships free of charge. And whereas Canine Companions and their service dogs empower people with disabilities to lead life with greater independence by providing best-in-class training, ongoing follow-up services, and a deeply committed community of support. And whereas National Service Dog Month aims to educate our community about the benefits of service dogs and the laws protecting their handlers. And whereas the city of Evanston, Illinois continues to work toward becoming an inclusive community in which all people and their trained service dogs are embraced, now therefore I do hereby proclaim September 2025 as National Service Dog Month in the city of Evanston, in recognition of service dogs and the adults and children with disabilities, and encourage all citizens to celebrate service dogs and be respectful of the rights to safe access in our community afforded to the adults, children, and veterans who lead more independent lives because of their assistance. The next item on the agenda is City Manager Public Announcements.
Good evening, Mayor. No report for me tonight. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is Communications from the City Clerk.
No report.
You guys did not give me the time I needed to reorient. We are going to do a little bit of adjustment to the agenda because we have two honorary street sign designations this evening, and I know there are people here to celebrate the person being honored, and so I'd like to handle those first. So let's begin with item HS1. Is there a motion relative to item HS1?
Mr. Mayor, I would move item HS1, a Resolution 60R-25, the approval of an honorary street name, designating that portion of Harvard Terrace between Barton Avenue and Ridge Avenue with the honorary street name Patricia A. Vance Way.
Second.
Councilmember Rogers moves approval of Resolution 60-R-25. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Rogers.
Thank you. This was someone who has done a lot for the 8th Ward, for the city of Evanston, for the community at large, and it was kind of odd because this came through as one of the first things, and the person who recommended her is a former neighbor of mine. And when I first saw the name, I'm like, Ashanti Henderson, I know that. Who is that? And then I realized that she lived in my same condo building at one time. But she really chose someone who deserves recognition from the city. Pat was the township supervisor for a little over a decade, about 12 years, and really worked to get the General Assistance Fund going and stronger, and actually took the township supervisor's office from deficits to surpluses during her tenure. She's been involved as the Community Development Director with the Economic Development Association of Cook County, the Evanston Substance Abuse Coalition, the McGrath YMCA, the Forrest Powell Association, and with her sorority, Alpha Kappa Alpha. And so I can't think of anybody to give my first honorary street name to that's better qualified than Pat Vance.
Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please take the roll?
I think there's a few people who might want to speak on it if we could.
I would definitely support that. The question is whether they are willing to speak with the uncertainty of the vote looming over them.[1021.32][1021.32][laughing]
I suppose we can vote then first.
Let's do it.
Councilmember Jara Carice?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Councilmember Davis? Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye. With eight, nope, nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries. Resolution 60-R-25 is passed, and I would just want to add my thanks to Pat Vance for the really remarkable work that I know she did, particularly with the General Assistance Program, which is just a very, very, very important thing in this town, and I'm glad that we're doing the small gesture of recognition. And I completely agree with Councilmember Rogers' point. I know there's several people here to speak in their appreciation to Pat for her legacy of community activities and service. So just ask, anyone who wants to do that, come up, and I would only ask that you just state your name for the record so that you can be removed from the public comment list if that's your preference.
Good evening. My name is Ashanti Henderson, and I am the person who presented this to Councilman Rogers. Patricia is just one of a kind, and I am so very happy that we are able to acknowledge, or the city is able to acknowledge, her contribution to our community through working through the political process and working independently and working in a community organization. So thank you so very much.
Thank you for suggesting this.[1130.52][1130.52][applause]
Good evening. My name is Anne Rainey, and I have a few things to say about Pat Vance. And this wasn't mentioned. Pat Vance has lived at the Mulford House at the corner of Mulford and Ridge for over 30 years. Not to mention the fact that you've probably heard of Neighbors at Work. Pat Vance began working at Neighbors at Work in the late 70s, and I worked with her, and we were supervised more or less by Hecky Powell. But Pat oversaw programs such as the housing program, the weatherization program, WIC, Women, Infants, and Children, and all the other programs that took place there. I think we were the first program in the city of Evanston that distributed food for people in Evanston. We instituted a program that in about 1978, 1979, that turned on all the heat, and Pat oversaw this, all the heat in the city of Evanston of people who had their heat turned off. This was before the ICC controlled no heat being turned off by the public utilities in the winter. And we paid for every single Evanstonian who had their heat turned off. We actually did that at Neighbors at Work. She is just, this, and our offices were at 1813 Dempster Street, which is where there's a New Mexican restaurant there. It's right across the street from the proposed Popeyes. And I always like to point that out.[1252.42][1252.42][laughing] Anyway, so it was just a wonderful experience working with her. She is just, she's just the most wonderful human being. I've never heard her say no to anybody, and the services she performed for people in this town in those years, probably 10, 12, 20 years, I'm not sure, just, you just can't imagine. And it was different back then because there weren't these huge not-for-profit organizations. It was really one-on-one where we were in people's houses and driving people around in cars, and so to honor her with a street name is really just about the least we could do for her. So thank you, Pat, for all you've done for the people of Evanston.[1303.22][1303.22][applause]
Thanks so much to both of you. And again, thank you and congratulations to Pat. Now on item HS2, is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I will move approval of Resolution 67R-25, approval of an honorary street name sign designation, designating the portion of Oakton Street between Asbury Avenue and Wesley Avenue with the honorary street name sign James Jim McCollin Way.
Second.
Councilmember Hadacaris moves approval of Resolution 67-R-25. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Councilmember Hadacaris.
Yes, this is, if you live on the south side of Evanston, one of our big points of pride is Schute Middle School, and Mr. Mack, as he's affectionately known, has served as the principal there for 26 years. I was lucky enough to be a Schute parent and experience his leadership. One of the things that struck me was during orientation, he gave everyone his personal phone number, and that just shows how in touch with the parents and the kids he is and was. Great guy, touched so many families with his, you know, care for their kids. He's really an outstanding guy, and I think, you know, as soon as he announced his retirement, the Schute PTA reached out and we collaborated to go and do this because he really deserves it, so.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Jara Carice?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Councilmember Davis?
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries. Resolution 67-R-25 is adopted, and that portion of Oakton shall have the honorary name James Jim McCollin Way. And are there folks here to speak in appreciation of Mr. Mack's time at Schute? Councilmember Harris.
So you always hear me say Class of '87. Jim is part of the Class of '87. We attended King Lab K through 8, and he was just a great guy back then. Basketball, I'm not sure if he played baseball, but Jim was a great guy and very befitting. I've known him all of my life, for the most part, King Lab attendees. We were a family because we moved from the old King Lab to the new King Lab, which I talked about before, being traumatic to that group. So just very proud of Jim, having known him all of his life. So just want to say congratulations to Jim. Mustangs.[1517.72][1517.72][laughing][1518.72][1518.72][applause]
Thanks for the indulgence of the change in order. We now move on with the regular scheduled agenda. Next, the item is public comment. There's a pretty big list of folks signed up to give comment this evening, so everyone will be given a minute and 15 seconds. We start as always with those who signed up in person to speak in person, and then we'll move on to the online signups. And I want to apologize in advance, I don't know if it's eyesight or handwriting, but I anticipate having some trouble with some of the names, and I'll do my very best. We begin with William Carter, who will be followed by Terry Mostrom, and then Anne Rainey.
Good evening. My comments are not for City Council. My comments are for the citizens of Evanston. Today I watched people say, I want this, I want that, from the city of Evanston, and then I saw some of the people saying, we don't need that in the city of Evanston. Historically, the councilmembers go where the money is, and this people of the city of Evanston, they get left in the dirt. I'm from Wesley. We came to this council on numerous occasions, ain't got nothing. I asked questions about some lost funds, and called names, ain't got nothing. When the people of Evanston start standing up and saying to you people, we are not for sale, then maybe, just maybe, the city of Evanston can be a place where people want to live. City of Evanston is the first city of reparations, and the city of Evanston did nothing to destroy an entire community of low-income elderly black people. How are we to trust you with a history like that? Have a good night.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Terry Mostrom, who will be followed by Anne Rainey, and then Roger Williams.
Thank you. My name is Terry Mostrom. I've been a resident of Evanston, my wife and I, for over 30 years, and I'm here to speak in favor of Project 605 Davis. As, you know, living here in Evanston, one of the things that I can appreciate is I've watched storefronts close over time, and what I think we need in this town are more people, more residents. I know from my tax bill, it would be beneficial to have others here helping us pay our taxes, and clearly the ability to add affordable housing I see as a real plus, so I'm fully in favor of the project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Anne Rainey, who will be followed by Roger Williams, and then Frank Hill.
My name is Anne Rainey. I have to ask a question. Are you going, is veto going to be overridden or proposed tonight?
Consideration of an override of the veto is on the agenda, yes.
Oh, okay, okay. I am in favor of your overriding the veto tonight, and the reason I am in favor of that is because this tax is already on the books, and it is simply moving it from one column to the other. What I am going to suggest is that you move to remove the bag tax. That tax is not only regressive, it is punitive, because those people who are, have the bag tax imposed upon them mostly are those people who are elderly and poor. Second of all, I'm suggesting you reinstitute the beach token costs because mostly beach tokens have been paid for over time by people who can afford them. People who can't afford them mostly have been provided with free beach tokens. I'm in favor of your reinstating the 50/50 sidewalk program. It's ridiculous.
It's ridiculous. We're sitting around waiting for somebody to come and give it to us for free when we can afford to pay 50/50. I'm also in favor of 605 Davis. We, like the last person said, that we need, we need the people downtown paying sales tax, et cetera, and populating our downtown. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Roger Williams, who will be followed by Frank Hill, and then Timothy Schoolmaster.
Good evening, members of Evanston City Council. I'm Roger Williams. I'm a real estate broker in Evanston. Both of my daughters attended and graduated from Evanston District 65 and District 202 Schools. This evening, you are considering for approval the project at 605 Davis Street. It would be the largest apartment building in Evanston and is expected to have a significant positive impact on two Evanston schools, school districts, which is why I'm standing before you this evening. The property, much of it has, has sat vacant for a half century. Currently, it's only $21,450 in property taxes. 605 Davis is scheduled to open in 2028, and by 2031, we have a property tax bill of By 2034, the property taxes paid will be $1,248,649. And by 2042, $725,513. It will be one of the largest property tax entities in Evanston. The proposed development is expected to yield 18 elementary school-age children and eight high school students. Over the course of the study, 2026 through 2040, Evanston School District 65 will receive $6,40945 in new property tax revenue. Evanston School District 202 between 26 and 2040 will receive $3,672,709. Don't miss this golden opportunity to add significant property tax values to Evanston School District 65 and 202. In addition, the approval of 605 Davis will provide 86 affordable units and help slow down the outmigration of black evidence, residents from Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Frank Hill, who will be followed by Timothy Schoolmaster, and then Jack Martell.
Good evening, Council. My name is Frank Hill, 7th Ward, single-family homeowner, Board VP of Rezoning for Better Evanston. There is no perfect path forward to deal with Evanston's affordability crisis. But there is also nothing values-aligned for us self-described progressives about maintaining the status quo. In the nearly year that I have been coming to Evanston City Commission and council meetings, everyone who speaks is for affordable housing. But a vocal group follow their full-throated support for affordable housing with a revealing exception, which is not this affordable housing. Arguments against affordable housing projects range from fatuous to specious. They belie the conscious or unconscious core beliefs that animate them: anti-progressiveness, anti-development, anti-affordability, and anti-integration of workforce households into the exclusive wards of Evanston. We have an opportunity to make a small affirmative move to create affordable housing now with 605 Davis. It's not perfect, but to reject it is not principled, it's to side with delay. To the council members who I know are essentially for this project, this development at 605 Davis, please vote yes. Vote your values, vote your conscience. The nays won't be convinced of anything until you agree with them on everything. Just vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Timothy Schoolmaster, who will be followed by Jack Martell, and then Susan Kelly.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Manager Stowe, and members of the council. My comments here are about the three citizen appointments to the Finance and Budget Committee, AP Number 1 on your agenda. This has been batted around in the press. I will not get into that. But the very best talent on this committee, Leslie McMillan, was told her application was received too late for consideration. Too late from when? It was never posted anywhere on the city website or anywhere else publicly. Ms. McMillan had the misfortune not to contribute to the BIS for Congress campaign. We have found that there was another extremely qualified candidate who applied last April, and her application seems to have vanished until just recently. She also is not a contributor. Candace Chow and David Livingston each donated $2,500 each to the BIS for campaign, both on the same day, June 30th. Make of that what you will. The mayor claims it's just a coincidence. There are five council members on the Finance and Budget Committee. We applaud their 100% funding push, their excellence on that, and four of the five have called out the mayor on this charade and rightfully questioned Chow's qualifications. It fails to pass any known smell test. The city of Evanston mission statement is committed to promoting the highest quality of life for all residents, providing physically sound responsive municipal services and delivering those services equitably, professionally, and with the highest degree of integrity. If you truly subscribe to this statement, even if you were, at this point, made in haste or by mistake, it would greatly enhance your credibility, Mr. Mayor, by withdrawing all three names for now and reconsidering them once again based on an open and honest review of the best candidates.
Thank you very much.
The citizens of Evanston deserve no less.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jack Martell, who will be followed by Susan Kelly, and then Darushma Badi.
Good evening. Thank you for the chance to address the council. My name is Jack Martell. I've lived in Evanston over 70 years. I'm retired fire captain of the Evanston Fire Department, and I'm the president of the Evanston Firefighters Pension Trust Fund. I'm here tonight about the mayor's appointment to the Finance and Budget Committee. Please reconsider. The roundtable made issues very clear, and there was a very lively public comment. None of them agreed, supported the mayor's decision to turn away Ms. Leslie McMillan's bid for the Finance and Budget Committee. Of the four candidates who stepped forward, Ms. Leslie McMillan was by far the most qualified and independent, nonpartisan, exactly what the committee needs. Yet she was unceremoniously blocked. And said among two others, David Livingston is up for reappointment. He is retired executive from Illinois Tool Works, a company that cut pensions, benefits for employees, rank-and-file employees while preserving benefits for executives. This is from a transcript, this is David saying, because I mean, I managed, oversaw with a group of people, you know, pensions at a company I was working at. So... At September 9th, David Livingston repeatedly had to be reminded that we're talking about public pensions, not corporate pension. Evanston deserves committee members who strengthen our financial health, not recycle corporate practices that undermine workers. Public pensions are a trust, not a corporate balance sheet. This city deserves leaders who understand that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Susan Kelly, who will be followed by Darushma Badi, and then Brian Hanson.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Susan Kelly, and I live in downtown Evanston in a high-rise at 1640 Davis Street. I made comments about the 605 Davis Street development during planning and development, and I won't repeat them here in the interest of time. But I encourage more housing in downtown Evanston, but I don't encourage this design. And my bottom line is that everybody knows we need more housing, and everybody we want, knows we want to encourage development of housing. And one of the things that made me feel sad is that when I hear comments, it's either yea or nay. It's binary. It's either black or white. And I think there's room to compromise because we already have very generous development standards for this space. And we could come up with a, with a building that works better for everybody for a long time. We only say yes once. And our ability to influence this design can only come now. Because once we build it, we can't go to them with our concerns and ask them to make it better. So my position is, I hope we develop more housing in downtown Evanston. I am not a, whatever I was called for opposing it, but I just don't think we can settle when we can do better. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Darushma Badi, who will be followed by Brian Hanson, and then David Galloway.
Good evening, Council, Mayor BIS, staff. My name is Darushma Badi. I live at 1024 Himmen, 3rd Ward. I'm a member of the Evanston Land Use Commission. I'm also a real estate and financial professional with 43 years of experience and a 63-year resident of Evanston. Now that I got my story out of the way here, I was going to go through a long list of things. I'm going to condense it because I don't have much time. The one, the two issues that I really would like to share with you is the precedent-setting event that's about to unfold if you approve this project. I think Vermillion should work out a deal with the city that embraces some of these concerns that we've been hearing here today. I believe this project, this piece of land screams, develop me. It will not go anywhere. It will get developed. If they don't develop, someone will develop it. So you guys are the, you have the power to work with them and get them to sit with you and figure out a way forward. The precedent setting here is really costly because you know that you're going to have other developers coming to ask you to do the exact same thing. So I ask you, how many of these buildings can we build with these types of tax credits? I know of three sites in downtown Evanston that would be developable right now if that were to go through. And last thing, 10 more seconds, please. I would like to ask you guys to consider how housing, affordable housing and schools have a place together. When you think of affordable housing and you look at studios and one-bedroom units, that's not family. Family is two, three-bedroom affordable housing. And that's what I think of about affordable. So maybe we could do something with that to raise up the families so that we could get more students to come to our schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Brian Hanson, who will be followed by David Galloway, and then Jeff Smith.
Hi, everyone. My name's Brian Hanson. I'm a 24-year resident in the 6th Ward of Evanston, and I'm here to speak in favor of the 605 Davis development. Evanston faces, as you all know, an affordable housing crisis and a growing budget crisis. And this development contributes to both of those problems. Not a complete answer, but in terms of housing, it's going to create 430 new units, 86 of which are affordable. In terms of the contribution to taxes, I want to emphasize another number. I want to emphasize $21.4 million, which is the deficit in this year's budget that's made up through spending from reserves that are rapidly going away. We need revenues in this community for our cities, for our schools, going forward, and this can provide it. Yes, tax benefits ramp up over time, but revenues start right away. There's $2.3 million of permit fees. There's 300 jobs. There are new residents moving into our community that are going to contribute something around $15 million a year in local spending. These houses are where we want them, downtown, near jobs, schools, and transit. Some argue we should pass on this deal because another one will come along better. Can I remind you, it's taken us eight years to negotiate this deal. It took us over seven years to do Chicago Avenue. And if we walk away from this, it means years of millions in lost revenue, hundreds of units of housing, and millions of economic activity. Please move forward.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is David Galloway, who will be followed by Jeff Smith, and then Trish O'Shaughnessy. Did Mr. Galloway leave? I see, all right. In that case, we'll move ahead with Jeff Smith, who will be followed by Trish O'Shaughnessy, and then Linda Damaschek.
Thank you, members of the council. It's frustrating for me to be going over a lot of the same ground that we went over in 2006 to 2010. Back then, respected city consultant Valerie Kreschmer, who spoke earlier tonight, argued that more density would increase land values. And I agreed, but I asked, how can you increase density and land value in an already dense and expensive place without making it more expensive? That question has been now answered. You can't unless you make it less desirable. So the question I asked at the beginning of our planning process was if we've densified Evanston with at least 5,000 units over the last 30 years and Evanston's only become more expensive while aspects of diversity suffer, why would we think more of the same will have different results? That question remains unanswered. 605 Davis has been held hostage. It's perverse that we will threaten or find a homeowner whose paint is peeling or downspout points the wrong way, but we let property owners who let prime downtown space languish for decades, we get in bed with them. That said, I don't know almost no one who would object to a proposal within zoning or with a reasonable variance or allowance. 150 feet, 200 feet, with setbacks above the fourth floor that respect pedestrian scale and the historic block of low-rise across the street and the view of everyone who uses it, I wouldn't be here objecting. I've got a ton of respect for architects. There's a lot of talent on this team. The last chair of our comprehensive planning process was an architect with which I coached. I raised an architect, and I'm fully confident that the talent on this team can come back with a proposal with a reasonable height and proper setbacks that respect the street and the neighbors and everyone who cherishes the history and ideals of Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Trish O'Shaughnessy, who will be followed by Linda Damaschek, and then Meg Welch. And I apologize, it may be something else, O'Shaughnessy. All right, in that case, we'll go ahead with Linda Damaschek, who will be followed by Meg Welch, and then Hugo Rodriguez.
Okay, so I am speaking about the Strategic Housing Plan, which I believe is very important, and I believe process is very important. In general, our current process has had many arbitrary deadlines and has proceeded out of order. I believe strongly that the Strategic Housing Plan should be completed before the comprehensive plan is completed. I've said this before. Because it's foundational. The information and strategies selected should inform the direction of the comp plan. The survey could be a great piece of information. However, it's very poorly designed, and it appears to me is disingenuous and unlikely to provide with much useful information. It starts by asking three very mom apple pie questions that everyone's going to say yes to, so it's not really too informative. Then it asks for a lot of demographic information about the respondent. Usually, this is at the way at the end of a survey. And then it says, oh, you can, you can submit the survey now. Like, you're done, which you would have gotten really no information at this point. The most important thing is the specific strategies. The specific, they are the focus of the survey. They are described in pretty vague terms that's often difficult to understand, and clarifications are needed. So respondents should be asked which strategies they think are important. The survey should be redesigned, and it should be, the input period should be pushed back by a couple weeks for whenever the redesign is done. So they just need to move the pieces around to make it really useful. Otherwise, it's, it's really not very useful.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Meg Welch, who will be followed by Hugo Rodriguez, and then Paul Breslin. Is Ms. Welch no longer here? In that case, we'll move ahead with Hugo Rodriguez, who will be followed by Paul Breslin, and then Eric Passit.
Good evening, Hugo Rodriguez from the 8th Ward. I also served with the Evanston Housing and Community Development Committee for six years. And I'm glad to see that I'm not the only one to bring back to your memory the Wesley Buildings, 2014, 2018, and 2024. Those buildings didn't need to be condemned to rot away, as it is happening right now. The city decided to vacate all the tenants of those affordable housing units out of those buildings after a structural engineer determined that they could have been restored to continue housing those families, which the great majority of them were elder or with disabilities, life or long-time residents of Evanston. Also, a contractor who has worked on many similar buildings agreed with the engineer and gave an estimate of about $1,001.5 to repair them. Since last year, the city has entered into a $30 million lease for our civic center, built a $10 million animal shelter, purchased a failed business at the corner of Asbury and Oakton for an amount that I heard is between $3 and $4 million. Is replacing now tennis courts in James Park, which, by the way, every time I went by, they were in use by lots of people, and now turning to pickle courts, pickleball courts, for the cost of about $1 million. Most of these things are good things for our community, but why couldn't we have given the same priority to the 24 affordable housing units? Housing is a tremendous issue for the city of Evanston, and affordable housing even more. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Paul Breslin, who will be followed by Eric Passit. The next speaker is Paul Breslin, who'll be followed by Eric Passit, and then Sid Yiddish.
I'm going to talk for a minute about the strategic plan and about something it proposed. I would first say that the strategic plan is 10 months and 7 days too late. It should have preceded the comprehensive plan. It suggests several things that are barely mentioned in the comprehensive plan, and I only have time to talk about one of them. In Cambridge, Massachusetts, they've used a, an overlay zoning. And what that is, is they make a deal. If you will build something that is 100% affordable and permanently affordable, we will give you double the density that the zoning allows. Participation is voluntary, and it's usually done by nonprofits. This has the advantage of directly addressing the problem without playing variance games with developers. The other thing I would say is, this may be an extreme version. It might need to be, I would prefer 50% affordable housing so it isn't ghettoized. But it just seems to me a much more direct and practical approach. I realize that some people on my side of the aisle may think that I'm hanging things out too far, but I, I think something more basic and direct and focused on affordability is better than kind of trying to shoehorn it into the market-rate housing. Some version of something like that might actually be an improvement.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Eric Passit, who'll be followed by Sid Yiddish, and then Scott Roberts.
Hi, my name is, I'm Eric Passit. I'm a owner of North Shore Apartments and condos. I'm also a resident of the 4th Ward. And I guess I'm here tonight because I, the last city council meeting I was here was about six months ago, when the formal council, and some, most of them still present, passed a healthy building ordinance. Was like, kind of the last straw for me. You guys were, the council preaches affordable housing, yet I just got approached by a energy consultant today telling me to, it's gonna cost us at least $20,000 a unit to convert our buildings to electric, which is a vast underestimate of what it would cost. So yet, we're here preaching affordable housing, and yet everything you guys do is the exact opposite. And that's what kind of got me disgusted. The RLTL laws, if you read through them, again, completely anti-landlord. The, the investors I work for have made vows never to buy another building in Evanston for these exact reasons. Alderman Burns, you made a comment in Economic Development about how we could, we could attract more businesses to Evanston. I, I feel like a lot of the stuff I brought up over the last 30 years, some of it's been listened to, but in the last four years before this council, deaf ears. I, I felt like none, I came to a lot of those meetings, none of them was ever listened to. I'll come again, but I would appreciate that people be more open to listening and maybe retract some of these laws that are unreasonable, that were put in place four years, over the last four years.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Sid Yiddish, who'll be followed by Scott Roberts, and then Niles Coalition.
Mayor, city council members, just want to point out a noise problem. On the last, maybe month or two, there's been construction on my street, Emerson Street, also Central Street as well, and it's very loud and it hurts my ears. As a result, I've been sleeping with these, which are up to 23 decibels, and what I really think is that I didn't know anything about these construction projects. And what I think the city needs to do is inform the building management and make available by volunteer, ver, volunteer, whatever, you know what I meant. These earplugs that are 23 decibels and it cuts everything out. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Scott Roberts, who'll be followed by Niles Coalition, and then Olin Wilson Thomas.
City Council Mayor, I've lived in Evanston for 25 years, which I thought was a long time, but it's only half as long as that lot has remained vacant that I drop, walk or bike by every single day. Just quickly mention all the positives of it. We have a revenue shortage. It'll provide 2.3 million in fees. We've already heard all the taxes. It'll help the vacant businesses and failing restaurants with the 600 to 700 new residents, customers who also pay for grocery taxes, sales taxes. It'll help the public transit budgetary shortage with the additional CTA and metro, metro use. The affordable housing, we've gone over, we'll go over again. It also adheres to the healthy building ordinance, which is another positive thing that we've been trying for. Design Evanston supports it. It supports vacant garages. The main thing I want to talk about, though, is, is a malady which is affecting our community, which is tri, triachonof, sorry, triachontophobia, which is the unreasonable fear of the number This arbitrary number, which is only created by our digital numbering system, trimming down below this number will gain us nothing. Not, won't gain any support for it, but it will lose. It'll have 30 fewer homes, six of them affordable, reduces supportive housing, reduces the support of housing advocates for people who are trying to cut it. And it needs fewer neighbors, fewer affordable homes, lesser revenue, with nothing gained. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Niles Coalition, who'll be followed by Olin Wilson Thomas, and then Tom Lenz. Niles Coalition is no longer here. We'll move ahead with Olin Wilson Thomas, who'll be followed by Tom Lenz, and then Julia Forgash.
Olin Wilson Thomas, 9th Ward resident. So I've heard a couple people here tonight flaunt how many years they've been taxpayers in Evanston, so I'll do that, too. I have never paid city taxes in my life, and I'm a financial burden on the school system. Let's get into it. Evanston's goal is livability. If you break that up, what you get? You get live ability, the ability to live. This housing project would allow hundreds of people to live in Evanston. 86 of those units would be affordable. Each and every unit in this housing development presents an opportunity for new residents to call this city home. Local businesses will get more customers, and their tax base will grow through permitting fees and property taxes. As expected, there are people concerned at the height, or the parking, or whatever else they're talking about. There always will be, there always are. Changing the brick facade won't stop these complaints. Cutting floors won't stop these complaints. Tweaking loading zones won't stop these complaints. You have the chance tonight to set hundreds of new eager and tax-paying residents up for a life of success in Evanston. And as a young person, it's exciting to grow up in a town that's making these types of investments in their future. That's why me and so many other people, excuse me, so many other people support this development tonight and have come for that reason. Sending this back to the drawing board will only slow things down and delay this project that will be life-changing for so many people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Tom Lenz, who'll be followed by Julia Forgash, and then Gul Aga.
That guy was great, wasn't he? I'm Tom Lenz. I live at 1019 Dobson Street in the 8th Ward. I'm here to make two points in support of 605 Davis Street. First, it's no surprise to anyone that the country and Evanston have a serious housing affordability crisis. There's an estimated need for four to seven million units of housing of all types. It drives up costs for everyone, including middle-class families like me. Like, I'm guessing a lot of folks here, my kids, my adult children, can't afford to live in Evanston. One of the benefits of adding that many units, the 430 apartments at 605 Davis, is that by adding to the housing supply that way, it tends, and this is research-based, it tends to slow the rise in rents and slow the rise in overall housing costs. So even though I live pretty far away from the site, it will benefit me if we can slow down the rise in housing costs. It's, the 86 affordable apartments have already been brought up. That's a great start, together with the Housing For All Plan and other developments that are underway. We can really begin to make a dent in the need for affordable housing. I am less confident than many of you that there is another project waiting in the rings. This may not be a perfect project, but I really encourage those of you that have questions, find a way to support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Julia Forgash, who will be followed by Gul Aga.
Does this bend a little bit? Okay. Thank you. My name is Julia Forgash. I live in the 4th Ward. I am here to speak in opposition to the proposal for 605 Davis Street. This is not about a building on this site. This is about the size of this building. It's very frustrating to me that people who support this project look at this project as all or nothing. If we don't do this, the land will sit empty. If we don't do this, we will miss an opportunity for affordable housing. If this is all true, then we are not trying hard enough. But what I really do want to talk about is the traffic. Some people, including a council member, have said that the tra, that traffic is just an inconvenience. But if you want people to visit downtown, then you need to think about what kind of experience they will have. The developer presented a traffic study that concluded that there will be no worrisome increase in traffic congestion. This study should be unacceptable to you because their data was collected on President's Day, which was a holiday, and also one of the coldest day of, of 2025, meaning way fewer people than normal were out. Anyone that lives or spends time downtown knows that, knows that the traffic on Chicago Avenue between Church Street and Davis Street is consistently jammed. We also have to factor in the approved legacy building on Chicago near Davis Street. These two buildings combined will house approximately 800 new people near the same intersection. Any vehicle trying to reach either of these buildings will have to drive on Chicago or Davis or both. All of these 800 building will, all these 800 residents will utilize Amazon, UPS, FedEx, food delivery, rideshare, movers, repair and maintenance, emergency services. These are two-lane roads. Where are these cars supposed to go? The proposal has two loading bays and room for two cars in front. Where these vehicles will go is blocking traffic or sitting in the alley.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Gul Aga.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors. I've already submitted to you a detailed op-ed pointing out the environmental problems and the wind problems with, with this building. I don't need to emphasize that the climate change is a cataclysmic event that's happening, it's unfolding before our eyes. High-rise buildings use concrete and steel. They are more than two and a half times as bad. This building, a similar, similar square footage in low rises versus this building is adding 10 million miles driven each year for the life of the building. The building has done nothing to mitigate the climate damage. Gets two out of nine on energy performance. There are no windows that shield in, in terms of the electrochromic windows. There's no green concrete. There's nothing done to mitigate it. In addition, one out of five days, four out of five days, you can, you can stroll in Fountain Square, but the area, at least one out of five days, you cannot walk or sit in, in the six months of the summer. The area for that expands to most of Fountain Square. We don't know how often you can sit, how often you can stroll. There's no data on safety. There's no data on what happens to the children's playground in, in the preschool daycare. So we have inadequate data. We should not accept this sort of inadequate data. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes the list, this concludes the list of people who signed up in person to speak in person. We now move on to the, there are many people who signed up online to speak in person, and then when we get to the end of that, I'll make sure that everyone who's here in the room and wanted to speak got called, because sometimes I miss people, but I try not to. So the online signups for in-person public comment begin with Jennifer Grandi, who'll be followed by Erin Rosen, and then Dinah Jantirans.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Grandi. I'm a downtown resident, and I'm voicing support for 605 Davis. I'm an introvert, so this is hell, but this issue is too important. The proposed tower represents an incredible opportunity for downtown. Its successful downtowns require a consistent and diverse array of patrons. We do not have that right now, and adding more residents to the heart of the city will create a more consistent and reliable environment for current businesses and may even bring in a few more new ones. And it'll alleviate a 50-year scar in the landscape. We know this, yet for every proposed development, a small contingent of people say that the sky will fall. The same arguments come up again and again, including wind tunnels, traffic, mass takeover by Northwestern students and child-free couples, who are families, by the way, and we subsidize Olin, blanket statements about increased package delivery, and that's just a few of them. It floods the zone with shit for every single proposal, and that's how you get vacant lots in the middle of downtown for 50 years, plus a housing crisis. It's bad faith arguments that cost the city time, money, and potential. I've been to a few of these, and I can say that doesn't matter how large or small the proposal is. With the exception of wind tunnels, many of the same alleged concerns arose for the Masonic Temple, and that was constructed in the 20s, and that redevelopment is done. The sky did not fall. The same alleged concerns were raised for the Albion, same result. You can go all the way back to the coverage of the Carlson Building in the 20s, where they thought it would become Chicago, and that didn't happen. So the playbook is old, the prejudices are even older, and fear and anger are powerful motivators and political tools. And too often, those theoretical fear of change blot out practical solutions like this. And successful cities are successful when the politics of fear and anger are deprived of oxygen. Otherwise, we will become, we'll be a gated community. So I ask you to approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Erin Rosen, who'll be followed by Dinah Jantirans, and then Mark Clipper.
Hi, Erin Rosen, speaking in favor of 605 Davis. This town plays an amazing magic trick. Folks around here desperately want to be seen as good progressive liberals, but they also want nothing to change and often favor retrenchment and reversion. There's a name for them, and they don't like it. But we are full to the brim with closet conservatives masquerading as thoughtful progressives, and they parade their fearful concerns to derail practical solutions to real problems. That's this town. It's concern trolling all the way down. Take a project that doubles our number of inclusionary housing units. It's structured around tax incentives that passed unanimously. Say you come out against that project because it doesn't create your platonic ideal of affordable housing. I'll just say this: you are not a serious person. I'd go as far as to say you're a de facto affordable housing opponent. It's just yard-sign liberals pushing conservative values. They disguise their support for policies to protect the status quo, property values, and Evanston's character. Their agenda just assures things are worse for folks further down the chain. I haven't lived here all my life, but I earned a degree, got a job, got married, and bought property, all here in town. So I have watched long enough to extrapolate the pattern, and I'm begging you all not to give in to the folks who fought against the Albion, who fought against the legacy, who fight against this Davis Tower project, and damn-will fight to save their Chili's. They're the same folks that fight tooth and nail against duplexes but shrug nonchalantly when starter homes get torn down and replaced by McMansions. If you say that I sound angry, it's because I am, because these are the folks who regularly cater to and often win. Please don't let the gatekeepers win. Don't let a vacant lot to the derelict drive-through win, because if you do, we all lose.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Dinah Jantirans, who'll be followed by Mark Clipper, and then Jesper Stelter.
Hi, good evening. I'm also here to speak on behalf of, in favor of the 605 Davis project. I'm a resident of the 9th Ward, ETHS graduate. My children are ETHS graduates. My husband bikes to work. I train to work, and I work in affordable housing. I just want to amplify the voice of the younger people who've spoken tonight. The person who spoke at Planning and Development, who's 28 years old, rightly pointed out that so many of us are 50-plus, and, you know, we should really find some way to get more people like Owen out and hear their views, because I see my own children as well. They are not driving as much as we are, as older people. They're very interested in climate change and action we can take on that behalf, and they are extremely interested in affordability because they love their town and they would love to live here. So as someone who works in affordable housing, putting 86 units in one go would be an amazing accomplishment of, and a, really a kind of a landmark one. Knocking, that would knock off, you know, if we have 900 people- Knocking, that would knock off, you know, if we have nine hundred people on our waitlist, that's knocking off almost ten percent. And I just wanted to say really quickly, as I sat there, I'm looking at the logo. There's a high-rise right on the logo right there, and under it, it says City of Evanston. So just want to point that out. Also, if the city council could both get some and provide some more education on how affordable housing works, both the financing and the regulatory aspect, I think that would be really helpful in the discussion because there's so much misinformation or just lack of knowledge out there because it's a very complex subject. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mark Clipper, who'll be followed by Jesper Stelter, and then Stephen Weinberg.
Good evening, council. My name's Mark Clipper. I'm technically a Skevinston resident with a daughter goes to King Arts. And since even longer, I had been a resident of an office in downtown Evanston and even longer still, a shopper that has come to Evanston since nineteen eighty-seven. And I just want to express my support for six oh five Davis. Also, as an architect who practices in the multifamily space for over thirty years, I recognize good design, I recognize the qualitative aspects of this proposal. Yes, it's dense, yes, it's trying to serve a lot of things, but I think it's very thoughtfully executed. I have great respect for the kind of complexities that go into a building of this scale. But I do think it's going to add, echoing a lot of, with the support you've already heard, new residents that are going to support businesses and bring in revenue to the city. The affordable housing that we all desperately need, temporary and permanent jobs. It's going to bring that high-quality design that wouldn't otherwise necessarily be a given if you were to try to execute something at a smaller scale. But I think you have to insist on it for something of this scale. And I think that this proposal brings that, and it delivers on that. So appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jesper Stelter, who'll be followed by Stephen Weinberg, and then Ryan Garten.
Good evening, my name is Jesper Stelter. I'm a resident of the Fourth Ward. Sorry, I'm going on sixteen hours up, so I'm going to try and make this quick. I'm in favor of the six oh five development. I'll let my compatriots who are in favor of that continue to do the talking. I want to also bring up the one percent grocery tax. I am against that. It is largely a regressive tax, would hurt the low-income residents of Evanston, myself included, in a time where incomes are getting more and more pressed. And I believe that this council is up to the challenge of overcoming the budgetary deficit not adopting this tax would introduce. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Stephen Weinberg, who'll be followed by Ryan Garten, and then Robert Keating.
Hi, I will not be talking about six oh five. I am, thank you. I'm actually a resident of Chicago. And I would like to know if any of you, specifically Mr. Rogers and Mr. Bess, are you guys working with the City of Chicago to clean up the Howard L. stops, specifically the north side of Howard, at Howard and Palina? Could you please tell us what you're doing? It's a cesspool. It is an open-air drug den. There is prostitution. There are drug addicts and half-naked women running around, doped up out of their mind. I understand it is no man's land. And as soon as the people get pushed from Evanston into Chicago, they come back to Evanston. I understand that the City of Chicago sucks, and people don't work with the City of Chicago. I understand that. But if you could please publicly in some way, let us know what you're doing, so then we can put pressure on the City of Chicago and our aldermen and the CTA. The police that we've worked with have done a phenomenal job of pushing people off of the Evanston side into Chicago. Unfortunately, they come right back to Evanston. I ask that you guys continue to push the people off the Evanston side and into Chicago, so the pressure gets put into Chicago, because that's where the problem is. Those are the people who aren't doing anything. This is a larger problem. Progressive does not mean permissive for bad behavior. And that's what we're experiencing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ryan Garten, who'll be followed by Robert Keating, and then Mary Rosinski. Is Mr. Garten no longer here? In that case, we'll move forward with Robert Keating, who'll be followed by Mary Rosinski, and then Christine Bray.
Thank you. No single building can do everything, but six oh five Davis will have a huge positive impact. Eighty-six affordable units, every one of which we desperately need. Additional customers for our businesses, better conditions for pedestrians and cyclists, more transit riders to enhance our prospects of improved bus and rail service. Research shows mid- and high-rises are better for the environment with both embedded carbon per bedroom, but also transit emissions than low-density development. All kinds of residents will benefit. AARP says, quote, "Taller buildings downtown support older adults, having entrances with no steps located by accessible transit and services. This can aid with aging in place, increasing options for young couples and families." Pew Research finds, quote, "Large bipartisan majorities, eight and ten, support high-density near transit." Design Evanston and Downtown Evanston agree. If there's one site in all of Evanston where a building of this height and density should exist, it's on this vacant lot. Watering down six oh five will water down the tremendous benefits. I strongly support this project, and I hope you'll do the same. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mary Rosinski, who'll be followed by Christine Bray.
Hi, my name is Mary Rosinski. I had a lot to say, but I think I first want to say is I think everyone I know in Evanston, and I'm a realtor, I've been a realtor here for forty-five years, would like Evanston to be affordable, and they do support affordable housing. I find it really disturbing to see this attack on people that people don't know because they are asking for accountability, and they're asking, well, and I'm one of them, we're asking for you to help sort out this mass of development in our city so that we have a well-planned city. I think this is a real estate deal. I think it could be a good one. I think you guys could help us maybe get to a ten percent affordable housing, so that we get forty-three units. From day one of completion, the city would be getting between two-point-five and three million dollars to help our taxes and schools. Every other building in Evanston that's been, well, the more recent ones are paying an average of sixty-five-hundred dollars per unit. The way this deal is structured with twenty percent says, and that's sixty-five-hundred per year. Would this building, at twenty percent, would be paying fifty dollars per unit, per year? Now, who pays for that, those people that are living, six hundred residents? They have to get services, they deserve services. So it's not us versus them, it's an economic issue that we're helping you guys, we'll all help make sense of, and make this a good plan. We can do it with a ten percent affordable housing. The developers, I think, will be probably willing to work it. It's not all or none. And I only wish the other people who keep criticizing people who want common sense will understand, we are also the ones fighting for the twenty-four units of Wesley. And we've been out there fighting for other things. We are not bad people. We want a good Evanston for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Christine Bray.
All right. I've said it before, I'll say it again, facts matter. Housing is important to get right. It is important that when we talk about housing, we say things that are correct and true and not things that are false, because otherwise we make bad decisions. We've heard in the last meeting several times about Vancouver and Cambridge. We've heard it again today, both in this meeting and in the prior meeting. So I went and read that article. I was not familiar with it. I like learning new things. So at the time that the article that several people have cited was published, Vancouver had not done broad-based upzoning despite the representation of people that they had. They had not. Still, about eighty percent of their land was single-family only, not broad-based upzoning. They did do it recently, however, and since then, their housing costs have been declining. With regard to Cambridge, the affordability program that was mentioned earlier, yes, it is a one-hundred percent density bonus. In addition to that, Cambridge, Massachusetts, decided that that project was not, or that program was not producing enough results with their current land use regulations. And so what did they do? They went and they abolished single-family zoning. Now in Cambridge, anywhere in the city that allows residential, you can build up to four stories by right, or six if it is twenty percent affordable. So for folks saying that we should do what Cambridge is doing instead of what this, Envision Evanston Twenty Forty-Five is proposing, Cambridge is doing a lot more. So I guess I agree. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I, by my records, that concludes the in-person part of public comment. Did I miss somebody? Okay, so I'm going to go through the online, and you'll just come up in person as we get to you. Is that okay? Well, I'll just keep the order that we, actually, there's not a Susan to sign up online.
Well, city council.
Hold on, just can you state your name?
Susan Lee, L-E-I-G-H. Susan.
All right, if you can, go ahead and speak afterwards, if you can approach the podium, because you're not on here, and I want to figure out what went wrong, but go ahead.
No big deal. Thank you so much. City council, I live in the city of Chicago, north of Howard, affectionately known as the Juneway Jungle. I've lived there for fifteen years. I've walked down Howard Street, walked through clouds of marijuana, witnessed more than one drug deal, women giving oral sex to gangbangers, crackheads smoking crack pipes in the entryways, feces, urine, I've been catcalled, I've been physically attacked. North of Howard is a gateway to Evanston, the North Shore, the city of Chicago. And that hub just attracts riffraff that you cannot believe. The north side is Evanston. I brought the map. Specifically, this little corner right here is the Eighth Ward. This is Evanston, not Chicago. So what these little thugs do is they go on the Evanston side, we call three-one-one, they walk across the street to Chicago. Now, Chicago has to deal with it. They go back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. This is the problem that we have. This is gangbanger territory, beat twenty-four, twenty-two, look it up in CPD statistics. And we need your help to work with Alderman Maria Hadden, CPD, Ashkenazi who owns Gateway, because now they're going over to Gateway that they've been pushed off Howard. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We now move to the online public comment, beginning with Jonathan Selden, who will be followed by Christian Salvador, and then John Martin.
Hello, can you all hear me?
Sure can.
Awesome. Hello, wise elders. First, I would like Erin Rosen, who spoke earlier, to take a bow. Really perfect public comment, couldn't have said it better. Also want to shout out Owen and the person just two people ago who spoke about the studies about Cambridge and Vancouver. You know, this, they really echoed the points that, you know, this is really about affordability, access to Evanston's amenities, and overall livability. We have over eighty inclusionary affordable housing units, the most in one building at one time. Pretty remarkable for a city outside of Chicago. But the naysayers want a perfect project. They want to, it's like somebody who's waiting for salvation, and it never, like a cultist waiting for salvation and never comes. You know, this is just a way to delay, deny, depose. Three famous words. You know, more inclusionary units means less super-expensive, light-tech, credit-reliant buildings, which cost more for the city than the lack of, than the, you know, in lieu of tax revenue. You know, there's no denying these naysayers. They want to build a big, beautiful wall along our borders using the canal as a moat. People complain about the height. The height glass has already been broken. Sherman Plaza, United Laboratories Office Building, and other large buildings in the vicinity. You know, what, it's, there's already large buildings. It's already happened. There's good, there should be more large buildings. What makes, you know, what makes, you know, this particular building such, so controversial when there's already large buildings?
Thank you very much.
The FAR, you know, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Christian Salvador, who will be followed by John Martin, and then Tricia Connolly. It looks like Christian Salvador is no longer in the Zoom, in which case we'll move ahead with John Martin, who will be followed by Tricia Connolly, and then Kira Kelly.
Hi, this is John Martin. Can you hear me?
Sure can.
All right, good. Sorry, the video is disabled, so I was hoping to show my face. But thank you for accommodating me remotely. So the, my name is John Martin. I have ten-plus-year Evanston resident, and I'm currently serving on the board at District Two-O-Two Evanston Township High School. And I'm very much opposed to this proposal as specifically defined. You know, calling this affordable housing does not make it so. You know, I'm hearing that this would slow the rise in housing costs, but basic economics tells us that increasing supply does not automatically reduce prices. These units are proposed to be almost double the median rental price. Because remember, it's only twenty percent affordable, the other eighty percent, a three-bedroom is six thousand one hundred eighty dollars a month. That's almost double what the market is saying for the median. These are very high-end units, and creating additional high-end, expensive units will create more rising of prices. So, and I've also, you know, heard about how this is going to increase property tax revenue. That revenue is deferred, so it's a balance sheet item. It's not cash flow. You know, Warren Buffett preaches cash flow is the most important metric, and we won't see that for ten years. You know, we shouldn't understate the fact the Land Use Commission voted against this proposal. And in looking at the numbers, it's a thirty-seven-million-dollar, thirty-year tax loss as presented by the developer. I estimate that number would be much higher, but let's go with thirty-seven million. Eighty-six units is what is getting us that thirty-seven-million-dollar loss. That breaks down to four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars per unit. That's twelve hundred dollars per month, per unit. That is an expensive cost.
Thank you very much.
And I think we could, we could miss, we could reallocate that to build it ourselves for a much better benefit to the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Tricia Connolly, who'll be followed by Kira Kelly, and then John Story Williamson.
Good evening, Tricia Connolly, Second Ward. First thing I want to say is we've got problems, Evanston, about applications to our boards and commissions. Nothing about the process is indicated on the City of Evanston website. What is the timeline? When will people be informed, yes, no, that they're on a committee or board? It's in writing, applications are on file for three years, but you can't seem to tell us how many applications have been received, accepted, or denied. That was stated publicly by officials at the city. The Finance and Budget Committee, curiously, that seemed like a hot damn thing to get done ASAP, and I'm wondering why. Please do not vote to put Candace Chow on there. She does not have the qualifications. And in the meantime, while we were rushing to do that, we still have no Ethics Board. We still have two expired terms on the Commission of Aging Disabilities from twenty-twenty-four and two vacancies listed. There's a Park and Recs Committee member whose term is ending on October twelfth. Do they need to reapply now, or are they going to lose their possibility of being on there again? There's no guidelines. Please get that together. Secondly, this building, you know what? We're dealing with a for-profit entity. Yay for them. They're going to maximize their dollars however they can. It's upon our city to do right by the citizens and make sure that we're not doing a giveaway, that we are getting something for people in town, and that there isn't going to end up being a bad result on our schools and on people struggling to stay here as we don't get property taxes that we should for many years.
Thank you very much.
That is not okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Kira Kelly, who'll be followed by John Story Williamson.
Hi, first I wanted to just point out that the P and D expansion, granted only for Alderman Isles, resulted in six oh five Davis tying instead of failing. And I wanted to highlight this because I'm noticing a troubling pattern of unusual changes and shifting rules. For instance, a planned development used to require one meeting for introduction, and then two weeks later, another meeting for action. And also removal of commissioners that consistently favor certain points of view in what's supposed to be a neutral process. I was also disappointed that the commissioners who voted in favor of six oh five did not address really objective concerns that were raised during the meeting, that they deserved a response. And I don't appreciate really aggressive, kind of yimby, as they say, people telling liberals like me that I'm a conservative because I don't support luxury developers making maximum profit, and I prefer to because I don't support luxury developers making maximum profit and I prefer to live in a less dense space. You know, this nasty approach is really losing me. Anyway, tonight, at this very moment, I'm going back and forth between meetings because District 65 is reviewing school closure scenarios for up to four schools, in large part to close their financial deficit. Each school will create only a paltry savings of $1.5 to $2 million. Meanwhile, City Council tonight is considering a proposal here that seeks a 30-year property tax reduction incentive that will divert $40 million in property taxes away from our city and schools, funds that would otherwise be realized if the parcel were developed under a typical planned development, which would comply with both affordable housing requirements and taxes. Forgoing property tax from this building will cost us $2.7 million a year. This is more than the cost of a school that we are closing. And you know what? This is not a bad faith concern, and I really resent all these people saying things like that. Anyway, Council's worldview that sort of centers affordable housing and dense, intense development is starting to eclipse fundamental concerns and issues in Evanston, really the well-being of our public schools, our taxpayers, and our longstanding residents.
Thank you very much.
All right, I also ask you to, one of the Aldermen got it wrong. He said this was a neutral recommendation from the Land Use Commission. And that's, it's actually a negative recommendation, and they had good suggestion that a lower building would help mitigate real risks that have been presented, including wind, and also 650 people getting deliveries and such.
The next speaker is John Story Williamson.
Good evening. My name is John Story Williamson, 864 Sheridan Road, and I urge you to reject the 605 Davis Street Plan Development. First, the numbers don't add up. According to the developer's own fiscal study, by 2031, this 31-story tower would house around 615 residents, yet contribute only about $581,000 in property taxes. That's roughly $945 per resident per year. By comparison, my single-family household already pays over $8,400 per resident. That's a glaring imbalance, and it shifts the tax burden back onto homeowners and small property owners like me and my neighbors. Second, the project is misaligned with our housing needs. It offers a block of low-income units, but no true entry level or workforce housing for teachers, nurses, or first responders, people who earn too much for low-income housing but can't afford luxury rents. Evanston needs balanced housing options, not more pseudo-luxury rentals. Finally, the sheer scale of the requested variances on height, floor area, setbacks, and parking is extraordinary. Approving them would gut the integrity of Evanston's zoning code. If we allow quadrupling the unit count, eviscerating the floor-to-area ratio, and slashing parking by 2/3, then the zoning code becomes meaningless. This project asks too much, delivers too little, and sets a dangerous precedent for future developments. I respectfully ask you to uphold the Land Use Commission's recommendation and reject 605 Davis Street. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for the evening. We're going to now, before, so Councilmember Kelly's requested a break. What I'm going to do is do one more thing and then allow for a break right after that, because I know there's some, it may not look like it, but there's some folks here who are here for uncontroversial items. So let's do the uncontroversial part of the consent agenda, then take a five-minute break, then do the special orders of business, and then the stuff that's been removed. So I know that HS1 and HS2 should be removed from the consent agenda for the happy reason they've already been adopted. Are there other items folks would like to see removed from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I would remove PD1, please.
PD1?
And PD2.
PD2?
A2.
Oh, pardon me, A2 and AP1.
So so far, we have A2, PD1, PD2, HS1, HS2, and AP1.
A11?
A11? So far, we have A2, A11, PD1, PD2, HS1, HS2, and AP1. If there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move the consent agenda minus items A2, A11, PD1, PD2, HS1, HS2, and AP1.
Second, Councilmember Newsma moves adoption of the consent agenda with the following exceptions: A2, A11, PD1, PD2, HS1, HS2, and AP1. Councilmember Harris seconds. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Hera Karis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Suffordin?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis? Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and the consent agenda with the seven exceptions previously enumerated is adopted. The council will now stand at ease for five minutes and return at 9:15 PM. All right, the city council will come back to order as I will non-violently tap the gavel and break no objects. We now come to special orders of business. Is there a motion relative to item SP1? Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It gives me no particular pressure, pleasure to do this, but I am going to make a motion to override the mayor's veto of Ordinance 39025 and adopt that ordinance, which will continue the 1% local grocery tax continuously into next year and beyond.
A second.
Councilmember Newsma moves to override my veto of Ordinance 39-0-25. Councilmember Harris seconds. Would the clerk please, Councilmember Newsma, followed by Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to briefly kind of summarize my reasons for supporting this grocery tax. This is not a new tax. This tax has been in place for a number of years. Less than half the cost of this tax is borne by Evanston residents. SNAP recipients are not subject to this tax. Many, if not most, of our peer communities are doing this. And last but not least, I did a non-scientific poll of Evanston residents and more than two, of 4th Ward residents, I'm sorry, and more than 2/3 of the respondents supported the 1% grocery tax.
Councilmember Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When this originally came before council, I had advocated for a home rule sales tax. That would have followed along the same timeline as the grocery tax. That time has come and gone. I do not think moving this to the property tax bill is the appropriate place for it to be. And I feel that we've kind of been backed into this timeline and are kind of being forced to take a vote that some of us find unpalatable, but is the best of the solutions that we have, and therefore I will be supporting the override on this.
Would the Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you. I don't support the grocery tax, but I also don't support increasing property taxes. And my concern at this point is it's about damage control. So I don't support the property, the grocery tax. I will be voting to override it because reading the, reading the room, I'm afraid that otherwise we will be foisting more of that funds directly on Evanstonians, so, thank you.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Hera Karis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Suffordin?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, this motion receives the required 2/3 majority. The veto is overridden, and Ordinance 39-0-25 is passed. We now move to the five remaining items on the consent agenda that were removed, beginning with...
A2?
With item A2, except Councilmember Suffordin probably does not want to make a motion, so does someone else want to make a motion on item A2?
I'll move approval of A2, approval of BMO Harris Amazon Credit Card Activity.
Second.
Councilmember Hedakatis moves approval of BMO Harris Amazon Credit Card Activity. Councilmember Harris seconds. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Hera Karis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Suffordin?
I abstain.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor, none voting against, and one abstention, the motion carries and the activity is approved. Now on item A11, Councilmember Suffordin.
Here, I move item A11, which is approval of Change Order Number 2 to the agreement with Arbor Green Tree Service Incorporated for citywide tree removal, pruning, and stump grinding in the amount of $61,820.
Second.
Councilmember Suffordin moves approval of this change order. Councilmember Kelly seconds. Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions. So these are West End funds, TIF funds, right, being used? And are all these tree pruning, and is it all taking place in the West End also?
Yes. My name is Laura Biggs. I'm the city engineer. So this is funded by the West Evanston TIF. The entire property that we're looking at is included in the TIF geographic boundaries.
Okay, great. And then, just, just so I understand, so it seems like tree removal, stump grinding, and pruning is something that we could, if we had the staffing, we could handle, correct?
It is a very large amount of that type of work, and we have some time sensitivity because we need to complete the work in order to move forward with soil borings for our Mason Park project. We did discuss this with the union, and they were comfortable with us proceeding utilizing contractor.
Okay, but I mean, we could, if we had sufficient staffing, it could, we could, we could do it. I mean, it's not, there's, none of the work is out of the scope of what our, the kind of work that our staff can do.
Potentially.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Hera Karis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma? Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Suffordin?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the change order is approved. Now on item PD1, Councilmember Hedakatis, would you care to make a motion?
I will.
Oh, sorry. Councilmember Rogers, do you want to make a motion relative to introduction and action?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, sorry. Mr. Mayor, item PD1, Ordinance 65025, granting a special use permit for 815 Howard Street for an animal hospital in the B3 Business District. I would move this for introduction and action.
Second.
Councilmember Rogers moves suspension of Rule 20.1 so that Ordinance 65-0-25 may be introduced and acted upon in the same evening. Councilmember Hedakatis seconds. Councilmember Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, this has been an uncontroversial item in the 8th Ward, and I think throughout the city. And because of the odd schedule that we had in August with only having one meeting and timing on things moving through, land use, things like that, I'm asking council to please move this through for introduction and action so that the applicant can get in and not have to extend her contract by another period of time.
Would the clerk please take the roll on the motion before the council, which is the rule suspension?
Councilmember Hera Karis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma? Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Suffordin?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion receives the required unanimous majority, and so Rule 20.1 is suspended. Now pursuant to that rule suspension, Councilmember Hedakatis, would you care to make a motion?
I move approval of Ordinance 65025 granting a special use permit for 815 Howard Street for an animal hospital in the B3 Business District.
I second.
Councilmember Hedakatis moves approval, which is to say introduction and action, on Ordinance 65-0-25. Councilmember Rogers seconds. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Hera Karis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Suffordin?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and Ordinance 65-0-25 is adopted. Now on item PD2, Councilmember Hedakatis, do you have a motion?
I will move for introduction, Ordinance 66025, approving a special use permit for a new 31-story mixed-use residential plan development at 601 through 615 Davis Street and the 604 through 608 Chicago Avenue on the D3 Downtown Core District.
I'll second.
Councilmember Hedakatis moves introduction of Ordinance 66-0-25. Councilmember Isles seconds. Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hope that we can hear from the three members of council that we're not on the Planning and Development Committee, but I will start speaking for myself. I've said from the beginning, when this proposal first came to our attention, that it pushed the envelope of my comfort level, you know, beyond the, the limits of something I was comfortable with. I fully support residential high-rise development. I support residential high-rise development in that location. And my baseline for that, for that support is the previously approved 18-story building. So that's what I had in mind when I said, yeah, let's do high-rise residential in that location. The 31-story proposal that is in front of us now is, when it comes down to it, just too much of a good thing. I like the increase in housing supply, period. I like the additional affordable units, even if they are not forever. I like having more residents downtown for the downtown vitality, for the downtown economics. I like the design of the building. I like the architectural features, the pedestal with a narrower tower. It's what we need more of downtown in the context of nice architecture and not just a blocky kind of monolith. And I'm afraid if I said nothing more than 24 stories to pick up, to pick a number, the developer would be incentivized to make the building less aesthetically pleasing, to try and fit the same number of units in a shorter building, which means a monolithic kind of blocky pedestal, which just doesn't feel as nice to me. So my concern is, is also about congestion downtown. And as I have myself either stood on the corner, driven or biked down Chicago Avenue during, during rush hour, you know, I note there is quite a bit of traffic down there. So I've taken a lot of time to review the, to review the packet, looking at the traffic studies, and make all of the arguments in favor of this building, I generally agree with. Most of the arguments against this building, I can generally rebut. Nonetheless, it still leaves me in a place where it's not super, not super quantitative, but it's more qualitative. And this is an issue in a space that is an evergreen issue in Evanston, given our unique position between the city of Chicago and, you know, its urban environment and suburbs to the north, which are much more pastoral in nature. Evanston is here, right in the middle. And we've got a little bit of both, and it's kind of always going to be that way, so welcome to Evanston. This is not the last time we're going to be having a conversation like this. What it boils down to, to me, is how urban do we want to get downtown? I'm in favor of, of much more urban. But at some point, more becomes too much, and it's hard to quantify that. But for me, in a qualitative judgment, this building is just more than I can accept. So I am not going to be supporting the current design as is. It is my hope that the developer can come back to us with something somewhat scaled down. I'm not saying shrink it to two and a half stories, because we want, we want more people. We want the economic activity downtown. And, you know, I'm looking forward to hearing what my other colleagues on the council, who have not yet publicly weighed in on this issue, I have to say. And I'll be prepared to make a motion later in the evening to table this to... And I'll be prepared to make a motion later in the evening to table this to a future meeting to allow the developer to continue some discussions with stakeholders, including council members, and hopefully come back with something that can be robustly approved.
Is there any further discussion? I see one light, but also, Councilmember Kelly, there was a motion. Did you, did you try to flip your switch there or no?
Sorry. What, there was a motion?
Oh, I see. I'm just, sorry. There's a light issue up here. Councilmember Kelly followed by Rogers. Sorry about that. Yikes.
So I agree, Councilmember Nusma. I feel like the bulk and the scale is just way, way out of scale. It's nearly four times our zoning. I don't, I welcome a high-rise here. At this point, though, we're getting incredible variances without getting the public benefits. We're, in essence, we're going to be more than paying for the affordable units. So this is where I have a serious problem. I'm also extremely concerned about the congestion on Davis Street. It's already a very congested street with two, two spaces for, for drop-offs and I think it's just going to be with four hundred and thirty units, this is not going to work. I also have serious, very serious concern about the tax break, about the Affordable Housing Special Assessment Program. This will end up forfeiting in essence upwards of forty million dollars for our taxpayers. And what's really important to know is that this is front-loaded and this isn't deferred money. This is actually sort of, in a sense, gifted money. The first three years, the developers, the property owners will continue to pay as if it were an empty lot. So no, we won't be getting tax dollars to cover the services for over six hundred residents. So this is a deep, deep concern to me, so much that if we could negotiate getting full taxes, I would give a lot in terms of the height. And I just, I'm deeply concerned about that with the state of our city. And, and to be clear, just so people understand, with this, this program, this state program, we don't have to accept a development. We can say, you know what? We just, I think when this council passed our inclusionary housing ordinance, I don't think they realize that that meant if a developer came in and met the two, the fifteen percent, that we'd pay for the housing. I don't think, that wasn't discussed, that wasn't disclosed when we talked about it. So just to give folks an idea, with this particular tier three of the program, over twelve years, so a hundred percent relief for the developer the first three years, and it doesn't really start to have any impact until after year twelve, after year thirteen. That's when we start to get some significant taxes. But again, not until thirty years do we see the full property tax. So just to understand, from years one to twelve, we will get approximately, if you averaged out all of the gradual inching up to year twelve, only about thirty-five percent of what we would get. Whereas if they took the tier one, I'm sorry, yes, tier one, which is fifteen percent, I would prefer ten percent, but if we went with the fifteen percent break, we would get seventy-five percent of our tax dollars years one through twelve. That's a big difference, thirty-five percent to seventy-five percent. And keep in mind, during these rotten years at the federal government where we're facing cuts, we're not, we're going to foot the bill. So normally a building this scale, that usually, everyone says, yay, it's going to offer some tax relief. In this case, it's the other way around. It's a burden. So I would like to see this also, that there's some discussion and we did talk about it. I would like to see the developers come back and really look at that, look at tier one. And again, I'd like to see us reduce, I'd like to see us understand the moment and reduce our inclusionary housing ordinance to ten percent and invest in things like those Wesley buildings, invest in helping people stay in their homes in Evanston, invest in starter homes. I rarely hear us talk about starter homes. That's what brings families in, long-term residents who stay and, and, you know, shop at our local, our local businesses. So that's what I think we need to do, is really look at how can we, we can't afford this, point blank. I am about affordability. I'm about affordable housing, about affordability for our residents, for our property owners downtown, for our large property owners that are trying to rent their spaces. The rent for those will only go up and we shift that tax burden. So let's be smart about this. Let's embrace our community that's here now and not shift, not put upward pressure on them even more. So that's what I'm asking right now. And again, I'm also concerned about the congestion and the height. I mean, I don't want to let the residents of the First Ward think I'm not also deeply concerned about that. I am and I could go on, but I'm going to stop right there for the moment. Thank you.
Councilmember Rogers followed by Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have, I'm, Councilmember Nusma and I have talked about some of these concerns, some of the concerns I have, some of the concerns he has. We've heard concerns from other people up here at the dais. Some people are full-throated supporters of this project. So I think we're in different places. I do have concerns about us trying to negotiate from the dais. We've gotten into trouble with this before. We recently just paid out a, a three-figure settlement as well as covering legal fees and staff time during that. Six figures, I'm sorry. I'm looking at my three figures because it's, I have a K afterwards. I'm sorry. Six figures. Thank you for the correction. I'm really watching your tax dollars. So, so I just have concerns about us negotiating from the dais. I have concerns about tabling it while we do that. And so if we're going to be negotiating with, with the developers, which it sounds like a lot of people would like to do, I would prefer that this go back to Land Use Commission so that any negotiation that we look at is fully vetted. And so I would like to make that motion. If we are making changes to this project, that it be referred back to the Land Use Commission so they can fully vet any of the changes that are being proposed, whether that be the inclusionary housing ordinance, whether that be any of the site allowances that are being granted, and make sure that we really are on firm legal standing and not trying to just fly by the seat of our pants up here. So that is an official motion. Second.
Councilmember Rogers moves to refer ordinance sixty-six dash oh dash twenty-five to the Land Use Commission. Councilmember Sufferton seconds. There was one, there've been a couple of lights on. Councilmember Burns, were you wanting to speak to this motion?
I'll briefly speak to this motion, but I still want to keep my order in the other one. I just want to say the, if you read through what Corporation Council said about that settlement is that we weren't admitting any guilt. I believe the feeling is that we could have won there. They sued because they could in this country. So I just want to make that clear because people keep trying to toss that out as if it was settled. It was not settled in a way that I think people are describing as if we did something wrong. They had the capacity to sue. They were a law firm and I believe they used those resources to sue the city. So they sued because they could, not because they had a good case. And that's all for this one. Thank you.
Councilmember Isles.
Can we hear from Corporation Council about whether this is something that would be required to go back to Land Use Commission?
Thank you, Councilmember Isles. Good evening, Mayor Bess, members of City Council, Alex Regge, Corporation Council. I'm going to give you a standard lawyer answer and go with, it depends. So I think without seeing exactly what the new proposal is from the applicant, it's hard to really know if it necessitates a return to the Land Use Commission. So if the changes that are made, you know, change the application in a significant way, we would absolutely need to go back to Land Use to have an additional hearing. If it's a situation where the height is reduced slightly and then the parking is reduced a proportionate way, we have not deemed that a necessary reason to go back to the Land Use previously because it actually shrinks the proposal and it doesn't add on to any of the zoning relief being requested. I will say, you know, it's something that I would look to community development staff to determine once those changes come in, if it necessitates going back for another hearing, if it's a significant change. And generally, when community development looks at that in the application, they will compare it to whether or not it's similar to like a minor variation or a major variation. So I know that's not a full and complete answer, but really without seeing what the changes are going to be, it's really hard to determine.
I, I'm married to a lawyer, so that makes sense to me. I would suggest to Councilmember Rogers that perhaps table is the best option until we know what changes there are and then we can decide whether it should go back to Land Use Commission. So as it stands now, if you continue with this motion, I won't vote for it.
Okay, there's three people in line to speak. I think one for after this motion has been dispensed with in the event the motion doesn't pass. So we'll move ahead then with Councilmember, no one's asking to speak for a first time, so we move ahead with Councilmember Rogers, who has. That's a very dim light. Uh, Councilmember Sufferton.
Thank you. I just, a couple of things. And Councilmember Isles asked a specific question and the question was, does this require, you used the word necessitate, is there anything prohibiting this from going back to Land Use for review?
No, there's nothing prohibiting that.
Okay. Well, I'll just say what my feeling on this is. I'm not interested in working hard to preserve a vacant lot downtown. I'm also not super into the proposals that's before us. I don't think it's in the interest of the city for this to be negotiated by council members individually or in meetings with the developer that aren't public. When I started on council, the Albion was my first thing. Not my first thing, but very early in my time, I saw the downside of any sort of perceived private discussions. I think that having maximum transparency here is important. I will also say, like every other District sixty-five parent in Evanston, I just got the email with the school closure scenarios. I don't want to play around and lose this. I don't want to give more than we need to. And I think having maximum public transparency on something that is important for the city of Evanston is critical. And that's why I support Councilmember Rogers' motion.
Okay, now I think it's the case that no one's asking to speak for the first time, in which case we'll go first to Councilmember Rogers, who has three fifteen left.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question, if the IHO changes, would this necessitate a new application or anything? Other projects that we've had come through where there's been a change, it has required them to go back through the IHO process. Is that the case in this one?
No, we would only require them to comply with the current IHO or any modifications if there was a brand-new application. But if it's referred back to the Land Use Commission by this body, it's not a new application, it's just a modification of what they've applied for.
So modification doesn't require it, but a brand-new application would?
Correct, yes. And just to note, this project is subject to the former IHO, so the twenty nineteen, not what we currently have on the books of fifteen percent.
All right. So I guess if we, if we're taking floors and we're changing IHO, to me, that seems significant enough to, to be reexamined.
To clarify, we wouldn't deem this as needing to comply with the current IHO. It's not a new application. It's a continuation of the current application. It's just being modified.
Okay, and that's, that's, that's finding on this. All right.
Uh, okay. Councilmember Hadekatis.
Quick question for staff. If this were to go back to Land Use, when would be the quickest it could go to Land Use? And could you walk through the steps of what that would look like?
I'm going to give you the planner response. It depends. And.
You can't both have the same response.
So it depends on when we would receive a revision of their development plan. Staff would need to evaluate that against our zoning to determine what the zoning relief of that new plan is. That's typically going to take at least two weeks, maybe a little bit longer, depending on how many modifications we're talking about. From there, we would need to issue, I would want to issue new notice, which we have to provide at least fifteen days at a minimum, send postcards to everyone within a thousand feet of the property site. So there, you're already talking about thirty days. So again, it really depends on when we receive new materials and then from there, we would need to notice and depending on our caseload as well. So realistically, we're talking probably November, I would say, at the earliest, maybe December.
Okay. I.
And there, there's only one meeting in November and December because of the holidays, which also will have to be factored in.
So as I stated in planning development, I'm very much in favor of it as is. I also want to point out how awesome the system we have is. So, you know, one small change delays everything and I think construction costs and inflation are going up. This is part of the problem. And part of the problem also, like as we go through the rest of comprehensive plan and zoning, is let us be clear what we want and don't want so we don't have this continual dance. And so I will vote no. The, the situation with Church and Dodge is completely different. I will bite my tongue because I have very strong feelings about those people who sued the city and that whole situation. So it's probably best I don't say anything more. But that is also why we don't have nice things. I mean, and that was a project that we had completely affordable housing and we did the same thing where we said, let's cut a few floors to appease people and those people were not appeased. So I just will leave it at that.
Still no one asking to speak for a first time, so now we're going to go back to Councilmember Burns, who has four and a half minutes left.
If, if it's something we have to do, I think we should do it. If we don't have to do it, I don't think we should do it. I mean, much of what I'm hearing today from people who are opposed to it is they want to stick to the rules and the practices, but then when it's convenient for them, and it's like, well, let's just send it back because that makes me feel better. Let's stick to the rules, you know? It's been our practice to not send something back at this time and I think we should follow that unless that's not the case. And I think it's important that we're being consistent and predictable for people who are trying to do business with and in the city. And ultimately, because this comes up a lot, like we're having a public meeting right now. Like, for whatever reason, people, everybody doesn't like acknowledge this as a public meeting. It is a public meeting before the City Council and regardless of what happens publicly, I'm still going to exercise my right as the one that ultimately has to vote on this item and explain it to my constituents and to the community at large, how I arrived at this decision. And some of those conversations are going to happen privately, but as I think we all do, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to show you my work publicly, right? But I'm, whether it goes back to Land Use or not, I'm still going to meet with the developers on my own so I can dig deeper into understanding the project. It's not appropriate to spend as much time as I'm going to spend privately, publicly, unless we want, you know, twelve-hour, you know, twenty-hour marathon meetings like every council meeting. It just doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me. So I'm going to, you know, support, I'm not going to support this. I think it's at council for a reason. It's up to this, this body to, you know, vote as individuals based on how they feel. I think if commissioners want to provide comment, you know, and, and send us different thoughts and recommendations, they, they should do that and I will consider it all, but I think it's appropriate that it remain here.
Still no one's asking to speak for a first time. Councilmember Kelly with thirty seconds left.
Well, I mostly want to say first and foremost, we owe it to our residents, no disrespect to the developers, but first and foremost, to exercise due diligence, more to our residents. And, and I, I agree, I think for transparency's sake, this should go back. We're talking an extra month so that it can be vetted properly. Also, we're talking about rising cost of living in Evanston. You were concerned about construction? Well, we're talking about perhaps the difference between getting seventy-five percent of what we'd get versus thirty-five maybe. And that's over twelve years. Remember, it's nothing the first few years while we're facing grant cuts and everything else. So this is about doing proper due diligence on behalf by, for our residents. Okay? That's, that's why we take the time we need to, because right now we're looking at, you know, Okay, that's, that's why we take the time we need to, because right now we're looking at, you know, a huge basically giveaway. That's going to cost us a lot. We still have to supply the services for those years, for those first three years, and we're not going to get a dollar more. So. So this is about due diligence and transparency. I will support the motion to send this back. I also want to mention, we also forfeit, I think they only pay thirty-five percent of fees also because of the inclusionary housing. There's a lot of talk about fees. I just want to throw that in. Um, okay. And I have questions about FAR, which I think should also go back. We don't have a mechanism currently, and I did discuss this with our legal team. We don't have a mechanism in our code that allows for transfer of development rights this way. There's no mechanism. That needs to be more examined. I know our legal team needs to spend more time on that. We also don't know who the single ownership or who has single control over the property. That is still not clear. So those, because by code, you have to have single ownership, demonstrate single ownership or control. That's not, for many reasons, this needs to go back to land use commission.
Council member Harris.
I tried to stay really quiet about this whole situation. I find myself in a quandary because I represent a little like Jonathan's second and fourth, very vast, different communities in one. This, as we know, I've lived here fifty-four years and it's been empty. And it's going to stay empty until we do something with it. It, it's not going to just generate things unless we create something in that space. And I've always believed that people will bring other things, not other things will bring people. We understand traffic will be a problem, but anywhere you put more people, there's going to be traffic or restaurants or lack of restaurants. There's going to be more traffic, there's going to be more people. So we need to make sure our traffic studies help us figure out how to move people, when to move people. It's a hard decision to make and I struggle with it because I, I most definitely, I think people always think we get a kickback. And I ain't seen that yet. Don't want to see it, but we, we don't. And it isn't about getting money. It's about trying to do the right thing at the right time for the future. We, we know we're not going to see all of this manifest right now. But it's for the Owens who we're carrying now, as he said. But I don't mind carrying Owen because I have faith in what Owen is bringing to the table when he's old enough to have a family here, whether that's three kids or no kids. I have children, well, they're adults, who don't want to have kids, but they have a family. My son has a wife. That's a family. They don't need a big house. So I struggle. And, and then I'm going to have this problem in the second ward in a, in a little bit because there's another development. So I think people will bring what we need in the city. I travel the world. And homelessness is an issue all over, businesses closing. It's not unique to Evanston. We like to think that we're this unique place, that we're the only people who, our businesses are closed and are shuttered. We're not. Australia had it. Portugal had it. Egypt had it. So what do you do? You bring more people to bring something to the environment and the need. So I still haven't said where I fall. I'm struggling. I, I like the land use, you know, to, to go back, but this is a hard one for me. I, I, I'm in favor of it, but we've got to do it right. Can't just do it. I'm not about just doing the thing. It's about doing it appropriately so that in twenty years, when we're sitting down chilling and we see Owen up here, he's not fixing a mistake. And I felt like we've done that a lot in past councils, not taking care of things. And now we have to carry the burden of figuring that out. So I don't think I told you anything yet, but good.
Uh, still no one's asking to speak for a first time. Council member Hadekatis with three twenty left.
So I, I have a question for, for million group, if y'all would mind fielding, fielding a question here. I, I think it was pretty apparent, I think, to all of you that you, it was not going to be a yes-going-forward vote this evening. I just want to ask, how does this, how does the two scenario, like, what does delaying till November do for your business? Because this is a business. And like I said, like, I think I said it at the previous meeting. Like, no one's coming here to save us. There's no billionaire that's going to build us housing. And so we have to incentivize and have programs that incentivize businessmen to build what we want. And so for me, inclusionary units and affordable housing is something I think our community wants. So if you can just speak a little bit to what the different scenarios would mean for building this building and starting your project.
Well, thank you, council member. For the record, my name is David Reeftman. I'm an attorney representing the developer. And I'd like to frame this a little bit differently than you have for the moment on this particular question. The matter before the council is the proposal and the application for a thirty-one-story building with the development allowances that you are considering. We are not being asked to go back to land use committee with anything other than a vague idea that most of you feel that it is too big, too tall, whatever. And I believe that the better way to handle this, consistent with years and years of city precedent, is that the city council members can determine that they would approve an application subject to various changes. And it stays at the level of the council to do that. If you look at the things that the land use commission reviews, they felt it met almost all of the standards except one. There was only one that they disagreed on. And to go back to the land use commission to review all of those standards again, when they overwhelmingly determined that almost all of those standards were met, creates a problem in terms of, first of all, we don't know what those conditions for approval would be from, from this body. Because it's ultimately your determination. They're simply making a recommendation and have made that recommendation. So that's the first thing I'd like to be very clear about. And then secondly, it really, for all the applications that have come before the city council, changes have been made at the level of city council after land use commission. So I believe it puts this developer in a very difficult position. It's been a long time to get through this process. Construction costs are increasing, tariffs are uncertain. It continues to create uncertainty for the project for things, last point I'll make and then Chris can speak is, the development allowances would not increase. Were we to say thirty-one stories isn't enough, let's go up, even there, I think the council could do it. But that might be the basis to say, well, let's review that again. You want to make it thirty-five stories. You want to add twenty-five units. The only thing that could happen in this particular case is those development allowances would be reduced. So if we can get guidance from council, the conditions to the changes to the application that you would, that enough of you or majority of you would approve, I think that would be the fairest approach for the developer.
Nothing else to add at this time, but if you have any follow-up questions, happy to address them.
Okay, and I, I would just say, since we're in a public meeting, I think if anyone has input on what they'd like to see, I think now would be the time to share it.
Still, um, still on second opportunities, council member Isles with four thirty left.
Okay, in the interest of full transparency, if you didn't see the previous committee meeting, I am a full-throated supporter. I'm not asking you for anything additional than you've already put in your application. I feel really strongly, we need to increase our housing supply. We have a, a crisis of affordability. And there is a direct tie in a community between the housing supply or lack of it and the number of unhoused people in the community. So I see every day in my day job, the consequences of a lack of housing supply. You know, I think this state incentive that, that people are sort of vilifying is working exactly the way it's supposed to. There's a reason it was unanimous. If we want someone to build something in our city, we should be predictable. And we should not be afraid of the fact that there's an incentive offered to do so. We need more residents downtown to support the businesses and increase the vibrancy. This is a chance to increase our tax base, put a downward pressure on price. It's a thoughtful, architecturally significant building. I'm not worried about parking. I already talked about that. I think it's an appropriate spot for density and mass. It's transit-adjacent development. It takes into account our environmental concerns. I, I mean, we can dither about the details forever, but this project meets the goals that we say we have.
Still on second opportunities, council member Newsma, I've skipped over you a million times and you've been very uncomplaining about it. That's because your time is up, so I'd ask you to be relatively brief in your second comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a couple of things. I think it makes sense to keep this at council. In direct response to council member Harry Caris's request for input on what I would like to see in this project, I think my concerns can be accommodated by losing a floor of parking, moving those parking spaces to the city lot and reducing the height by as much as you can get, you know, down to twenty-something stories. I've given you a specific number, willing to, yeah, see what you have to offer.
Now moving on to third opportunities, beginning with council member Burns who has two and a half minutes left.
First thing I just want to say is, is if, if you look at what the point of a planned development, it is specifically to look at proposals that go beyond what the base zoning will allow. And the point of it is to allow flexibility while ensuring public oversight. And so in many cases, what frustrates me is we turn these things, because we know most people in the community don't really understand what all this is. And, and so there's people in our community try to make it seem like these things, you know, don't exist for a reason. This is, this is going through this process because it goes beyond the base zoning, right? And, and we've communicated through our zoning ordinances that we want to consider these projects in this manner that go beyond base zoning. And so I just want to make sure that that's understood, that this is the way these type of projects should be handled. And they, and the developers and no one up here should be criticized for following our processes. The, the other thing I want to say is that, you know, that what you believe is the character is not necessarily shared by your neighbors. You know, my family and I went downtown for the first time, actually went on the River Walk in Chicago. And we had a wonderful dinner. My son was celebrating his thirteen, thirteenth birthday and walked along the river. And that experience, my, my four-year-old was like, after being down there with the tall buildings and all the people, she was like, this is America. That was what she said. Because like to her, she was, what she was trying to explain is like, oh, this is like what humans can do with all of our potential. Like, wow, the tall buildings, the, you know, all the commercial activity, the people enjoying themselves, the Chicago river. So to her, she was like, oh, this is America, right? And so to that little girl, like, the tall, the height didn't really concern her. In fact, for her, I'm sure it felt magical. It, it lifted her spirit. And so I just want to make that clear, that what you believe is like the character of Evanston is not necessarily shared with everybody. It should be, you know, acknowledged, but I think people have a difference of opinion of what they're looking for, especially in the downtown. And I would, I agree with my daughter in that sense. I do believe, I like to marvel at what's, what, you know, at these tall buildings and what we're capable of as human beings. And, but I want a balance of that, which is why I love the fact that you don't, you can, if you don't want that, you can go to Central Street, right? Or you can go to Noize, or you can go to Ashland Arts or Church and Dodge, if you want something that's more lower dens, lower density, right? And so we could build up downtown Evanston while still kind of preserving our neighborhoods as lower density, but also create a bit more magic and activity downtown, which I think is the point of them. And what a privilege to even be able to build up our downtown in ways that some of the city's neighbors, you know, neighborhoods next to us can't do because they don't have the same interest in their city as we do. The, uh, I am interested though in the other tiered options. Council member Kelly, I think, brought up tier, tier one as an option. I can't sit here and say that I, I wouldn't feel like this was a better, better project if we could have some affordable housing and more taxes earlier in the process. If we can make that happen, I would love to see it. Well, I will say, unless I miss something, I don't think the county or the state, I don't know who was responsible for developing this program. I'm not sure they, they partnered with local municipalities to create it in the way I would have liked, which is why in the last few days, I'm like, there's something in this. I, I think it's appropriate for people to be a little concerned about the way it was put together. And that's not to say that we shouldn't provide incentives. We should. It's, I mean, the, the Lytech program, which has produced the most affordable housing, it's like the, the federal treasury is on the hook for that, right? Making that possible. I think we're feeling a little uncomfortable because for the first time, like, we're on the hook, right? We're responsible for investing in the affordable housing that we need. I, I feel people are saying, well, it's a little bit too much. But I, I do want to make that clear is that if you look at, you can do your own research, to build an affordable housing unit, you're talking about anywhere from two hundred thousand to five hundred thousand, depending on you ask. It is not free, right? And so even if you take the lower end of that two hundred thousand dollars for eighty-six units, that's seven point seven million. If you take the higher end, we're in thirty-four million. And so we're talking about tens of millions of dollars. Like, the money has to come somewhere. And so this idea that this just comes out of nowhere is just not practical. But I do agree that we might be able to strike a better balance with time. While I don't believe we need to take this back to land use, I, I do believe that we should hold it until a future council meeting so that we can, you know, continue to work on this. And then, um, let me see if there's anything else. This is affordable housing. I just want to make that clear because people always try to like stretch things out like, but is it? Yeah, it is. It's sixty percent AMI, right? If you look at any HUD standard, any standard, that is considered affordable. I think the rents for a two-bedroom would be like twelve or thirteen hundred or something like that, maybe eleven to twelve hundred. Yes, this is affordable housing. Yes, it's going to double the amount of inclusionary affordable units that we've created since the inception of the program, which I believe was oh-eight. Yes, it's affordable. I've had people email me like, and this, and they're not, it's not creating any affordable, it is. We've had people with their chest poked out, make it seem like the eighteen-story development that this council at one point reviewed was residential, just to find out it was office space, which we know doesn't work in Evanston or really anywhere right now since the pandemic. So I would ask everybody to just, to, to, to please be open to new information. You do not understand it all. We're up here, spent a lot of hours, you know, doing this and we don't know it all. We don't, I don't think, make it seem like we know it all. Let's, but I, I do think we can bring a better balance to this with a bit more time. That's all. Thank you, Jim.
Still on third opportunities, council member Rogers with two twenty-five left.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I think I made my concerns about issues during planning, uh, planning and development, that it fails to meet standards B and F. I'd be much more happier with a twenty-to-twenty-four-story building here, three hundred to three hundred and fifty units. I'd like some more exploration of long-term public benefits that we would get. At this point, um, I'm glad we've had this discussion. The reason I made this motion is because I didn't want this to be tabled immediately before we had a chance to discuss it. So I am happy to withdraw my motion, but I reserve the right, depending upon what comes back, to kick it back to land use at that time. If I feel that we've, we've drastically strayed from it. But I thank my colleagues for having this conversation and sharing their ideas and look forward to talking with the developers further. So I withdraw my motion.
The motion to refer this, to refer ordinance sixty-six dash O dash twenty-five to land use commission is withdrawn. This time, there are two people in the queue, each speaking for the third time, each with their time expired. Council member Kelly, you flipped your light on before the motion was withdrawn. Do you still want to speak? But, yeah, okay, go ahead. And again, your time has expired, so I was asking you to be judicious.
Thank you. I mean, this is a big deal and I, I feel like, I feel really limited in time. But I also want to say, like, when a developer comes in and is asking for more than three times our zoning, like, it shouldn't be like, we got to, I mean, you should expect this to be a little clunky, right? I mean, to say, oh, you know, this is just going to be delayed another month, a thirty-one-story building, the tallest in Evanston history, you know, with, I mean, I just feel like, you know, we get so worried that we're going to delay the developer, where they're coming and asking for a whole lot here to cram into, you know, the middle of Davis Street. And I also just want to mention, I don't know if residents really understand FAR and what that is. I mean, it's really sort of like a speed limit for bulk, that gives architects some flexibility. And, and it's true, like in Paris, it's more dense than it is here. It's well-planned. And it has, it's FAR, it's. And it has, it's FAR is far less than what we're, I mean, what we're seeing here. Even New York City, the highest, some of its most dense areas, I think it's like, you know, the very highest it goes with, um, I think with bonuses is like twelve, and we're talking about seventeen here. So this is about good city planning. We can do density, but we want to plan appropriately. And I mean, this is, so I just want to put that out there. And for me, and I also want to say, with regard to the state law, everyone says, everyone just, you know, that was passed unanimously. I've talked to three legislators who had no clue what they had really passed when they voted, because you say affordable housing, and I hate to say it, but there's kind of this, you know, we just support it, and had, did not understand the tax break involved. And even some of the lobbyists, you know, this was mostly done because of, Chicago passed a very robust inclusionary housing ordinance with up to twenty-five percent. And, you know, uh, Related Midwest and others got heavily involved in this because it was going to be very expensive for them. But even some of the lobbyists didn't realize the impact it would have on a town like this. So, you know, everyone says this was just broadly supported. Yeah, it got the votes, but I have to say, there has not been a really a deep, deep understanding of what was passed and its impact. Um, I also feel the same way, something similar to the Chase Building, um, at the same, similar heights that my colleagues. I also want to see the, the sidewalk, the streetscape, the pedestrian experience improved. I think there really needs to be a transition between the building. It's a very narrow sidewalk, about, I went down there about nine and a half feet. I'm just spilling out four hundred and thirty, you know, six hundred, coming directly onto that sidewalk. I think without losing any real estate, um, you could have sort of a, I don't know what you call it, a, um, I think you call it an arcade, sort of an indoor lobby that has a transition to the sidewalk. I think that would really greatly improve. I'm all about that streetscape and the pedestrian experience, so I hope we can also look at that. Thank you.
Still with third cracks, uh, time expired, Councilmember Newsma, if you could be judicious with your time.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I too appreciate the robust discussion amongst my colleagues here. That's why I did not make my motion initially. I will make that motion now. That motion will be to table this item, uh, to the October twenty-seventh meeting of the city council.
I will second.
Councilmember Newsma moves to table ordinance sixty-six dash oh dash twenty-five to the October twenty-seventh meeting of the city council. Councilmember Rogers seconds. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Harry Caris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries. An ordinance sixty-six dash oh dash twenty-five is tabled and will appear on the October twenty-seventh meeting of the city council. Now on item AP one, Councilmember Newsma.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I will move item AP one, approval of appointments to boards, commissions, and committees.
I'll second. Councilmember Newsma moves approval of the five appointments, uh, enumerated in the packet. Councilmember Haddicati seconds. Councilmember Sufferton.
Yeah, the concerns expressed are about one appointee. How do you want to approach this, Mr. Mayor? Do you want to keep it as an omnibus item, or do you want to split them out?
Uh, that's up to the council.
Do you want to split it out by appointees, or just have people who've expressed that they're going to vote in the negative, vote no on the entire item? I think that creates unnecessary collateral damage, but I'm fine with voting no on the whole item, too.
I'm, I'm, it's, it's not my motion. I'm comfortable with either option.
All right. Well, I mean, clearly the qualifications of one of your appointees has been called into question. I'll reiterate, um, every District sixty-five parent just got the school closure notification tonight. And if you think that that is the best that the city can do, then I think it's clear that the notification process is poor. I think the reappointment process is flawed, uh, and I find a vote no.
Councilmember Rogers.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to, I would like to see us have a process and where we notify members who are on boards and commissions when their terms are about to expire, if we are not doing that properly, so that they have a chance to, um, re-enlist, I guess would be the correct word. You know, when I was on boards and commissions, we never had to fill out a new application that I can recall. I think we were just asked if we wanted to be reappointed, and if we, if we did make that request, um, we were considered for reappointment. So I think that might be part of the problem here, in that there is someone on the board, Finance and Budget Committee, Ms. McMillan, who was interested, missed the deadline. I, I think we just need to make sure that we're giving people who are volunteering their time the opportunity to re-up, or at least express that they are interested in re-upping, um, when that occurs. Because this, this seems to be, uh, I mean, I was watching when my term expired, but that had more to do with the election than anything else. It wasn't like I just sit at home and count how many days I had left on land use commission. So that's something that I would request. But I will be not voting in favor. Again, I don't know how we're breaking this out. I'm happy to make a motion to move forward the four candidates that don't seem to be in dispute, if that would be the wish of council.
Yeah, let me first respond. I totally agree, and this is an awkward conversation to have tonight because Clerk Mendoza is not here. Uh, as I've said often, in the course of the last four and a half years, this process respectfully was a chaotic mess when I became mayor, and I've worked with Clerk Mendoza and her office to improve it and professionalize it. And, uh, I would say the high watermarks of the, that improve, those improvements have occurred when her office was fully staffed. As you know, her office has, I believe, both deputy clerks' spots as vacancies at this time, and so that may have been part of the issue here. And I completely agree, um, with, uh, your, uh, your suggestion. Uh, and I'd be very happy to work with the clerk to make it happen, but I, I do think that we're going to continue to struggle as long as those two slots are not filled in her office. Uh, and as for, as I said to Councilmember Sufferton, I'm happy to handle the motion however folks want it. If you would like to request Councilmember Newsma to withdraw his motion and do two different votes, that's between y'all.
I, I will modify my motion to split it into two separate motions. One for Ms. Chow, and then one for the others.
So Councilmember Newsma moves, uh, approval of the appointment of Candace Chow to the Finance and Budget Committee. Is there a second? Sorry, Councilmember Newsma withdraws his previous motion and moves instead to approve the reap, the appointment of Candace Chow to the Finance and Budget Committee. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Isles seconds. Councilmember Rogers, you still have the floor if you want it.
I yield.
Councilmember Haddicatis, followed by Kelly.
I just had this thought, and before I forget it, um, we should do something as simple as just send a calendar invite as a reminder to all the board, um, members when their, when their term is up. And that way, you know, gives them some, some buffer, but that way it's just automated and everyone, when you get appointed, you get a reminder. And that's, then it's on you to be checking your calendar. So, just before I forget, I just wanted to let everyone know.
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. Yes, certainly, or, you know, post vacant or whatever. We have plenty of boards, committees, and commissions that have had vacancies forever, and, um, people have applied but not been called. But additionally, what's problematic in addition to this is that we had yet another applicant who applied in April who had many years of professional experience in the field of finance, and that is one of the requirements. So I am really concerned about, and four of us from the Finance and Budget Committee, that you didn't, you know, I, I think you would have taken some heed to what we were expressing our concerns. Four out of five of us that serve on that committee expressed, um, concern that we really do want someone with that sort of deep-tissue understanding of finance that bring that to the table, not just someone else like us who's volunteered on a committee at, at a school board or whatever. And I'm not sure how excited I am about that experience aside. But, but so, to me, there really is a serious issue here, Daniel. Somebody else had applied in April, there were, you know, there was somebody else also on, you know, another board member who also had the experience, and you went ahead and appointed somebody who has no professional, you know, background in finance. And we expressed that to you, that that's what we wanted to see. The three members that have served these last four years did bring that sort of expertise that none of us would have. That's so valuable to the commission, so, to the committee, rather. So I am, I'm really concerned about how you handle this, as mayor.
Councilmember Isles.
I'm worried that we're veering into some dangerous territory here. This is, I haven't been on council long, this is the second time that we've pulled someone off the consent agenda to talk about their qualifications for appointment. And to the best of my knowledge, that's never happened before, um, these two times. You know, I was listening to John Kennedy earlier, and I actually agreed with him. Uh, he talked about the talent, uh, that Evanstonians have and the amount of time that they put on these, um, committees, uh, and how seriously they take it. There's just a significant investment that citizens make to serve on these committees, and they're not going to be willing to step forward if they get raked over the coals, uh, because some of us don't like their political sensibilities. So I think we should be really careful about how we go about doing this. Candace has got an MBA from Northwestern. I think it's preposterous that we think she's not qualified for this position.
For second opportunities, Councilmember Sufferton with four minutes left.
Yeah, I think, uh, building on what Councilmember Harry Caris said, um, this is a conversation to be had in the presence of the clerk. I think assuring that there are updates to the website where the vacancies are posted, because otherwise you have to reverse engineer them by looking at expiration dates of terms. So I, I think there were a lot of failures here in terms of casting a wide net. If it was going to be your decision to not reappoint a member of Finance and Budget, there were, uh, there's an entire community that was not aware that there was a vacancy unless they went specifically to the page to look at when terms were expiring. And to Councilmember Rogers and Councilmember Harry Caris's point, it's also apparent that one of the members of the Finance and Budget Committee was not aware that their term was expiring, uh, or that it required an affirmative action. So I think that, um, you know, I know that we have boards and commissions that have vacancies because there aren't interested applicants. Uh, I think this isn't, this wouldn't be one of those. I think there would have been, uh, had this been noticed properly and publicly, um, a larger applicant pool to choose from. If it had been your decision to not reappoint the returning members of the committee.
Councilmember Burns, followed by Harris.
I think council has the ability to kind of define and, and in some sense, set the responsibilities and duties of the clerk. And this isn't Clerk Mendoza-specific, I'm just talking about the, uh, the office itself. Is that, is that your understanding? Because part of this is, I don't think that that role has ever been like an official responsibility of the city clerk or any other, you know, department, division, et cetera, and I think it probably should be. I've also had, uh, not-so-great experiences with the process and, and, yeah, please.
Yeah, just, I just, I don't mean to interrupt, I apologize. Just, I want to clarify, yes, you're exactly right. Part of what happened was, at one point, this was the assignment of one of the deputy city managers. And when that deputy city manager left, it was kind of nobody's job, and there wasn't a replacement of that vacancy, and it kind of fell to the clerk without council assigning it or the clerk having bandwidth for it.
Yeah.
And so you're right. There, there's, this is not being handled with, uh, um, level of resources behind it that the number of committees and vacancies that we've got requires. I apologize, go ahead, Councilmember.
No, no, you get, so, so I think we should do that. And then, in, in terms of the, the, uh, kind of applicant in question, you know, not only does she have an MBA, but, but Candace was also, wasn't just like a, she, she didn't just, uh, participate in kind of a finance committee, just, just like completely as a volunteer. And she was the chair of the financing committee. And knowing Candace the way I do, I'm sure she approaches it the way I do, which is, we're spending time, in her case, with the finance team, in my case, with economic development, um, with the kind of purchasing team, having, forming a deeper understanding so that we can play a more active role in chairing that particular committee. And so knowing her, it wasn't a passive, "Okay, all you, all you do is tell me what's on the agenda and I show up." Like, she was involved. And, um, and I do think that that's, for somebody that was involved, was involved as a chair, that's different from somebody who just showed up to meetings, you know, voted based on kind of maybe even sometimes limited understanding they have. She played a key role, and I think that should continue to, uh, be considered as qualifying somebody to hold, uh, um, you know, a, a, a position like this with the city. And, um, if we don't want that to be the case, as I've told other people that were concerned, like, make a referral. You know, make a referral, make it crystal clear that we don't want to accept anybody unless they have professional, you know, finance experience, and that, I think, would be the most appropriate way to, to, you know, to, you know, to, to, to get that done. And if there's enough support on council, so be it.
Councilmember Harris.
I think my question was answered, but I, I do think we should have a standardized process, uh, moving forward, but I'm prepared to vote.
Continuing with second opportunities, Councilmember Kelly with three minutes left.
So, um, I'm not sure where we're at with the motions, but, um, I was helped craft the fin, the wording and the language for the Finance and Budget Committee, and I know, like, that was the intention, two years of full-time work in the field. And I can't remember how it's worded, but, yes, I agree with you, Bobby, that, you know, I'm sure she did a lot of that. But it's a special kind of work when you come from professionally working in it day in and day out. Like, the three members that have served, um, they brought perspectives and angles and understandings that none of us, no matter how much you serve, would have. So that was the intention of that language, because I wrote it, um, and who would qualify? We, we all were up here and we voted on it, but I worked with Nick Cummings at the time on that. So, so I think, I wonder if there'd be a motion, I would like to make a motion, I don't know where we're at on this, but that we open it all up, because clearly, I mean, not only for the, the candidate in question, but there was, to Tom's point, I think we'd have a lot more candidates applying, and we're, we're here for our residents. We want to appoint people who will best serve our residents on finance and budget. It's not about just, um, you know, getting someone on because, because someone found out earlier than someone else. If the process was not fair and transparent, then let's just, I'd like to make a motion that we open it up and put a deadline, um, by when people have to apply, and see if we get more applicants.
So the motion before us is a confirmation. If that fails, then, uh, that, that'll sort of automatically happen.
Then that will do what?
I mean, if, if the, if the confirmation motion before the council fails, then there will be a vacancy that will be open.
If the confirmation, right. If it, if what I'm proposing to open up, right, there will be.
No, if, if the motion to confirm the applicant, the, the appointee fails, then there will be a vacancy.
No, but I'm saying open up all three. Our, what are we appointing, three tonight? So I'm saying open up all three, um, because if the whole process wasn't transparent and nobody knew that there were openings, that I think we'd have other people in the community applying. I'm not saying.
So that, that would require voting, you know, in this instance, voting down this motion and then not having another motion to confirm the other two. Councilmember Newsma.
I was just going to call the question, uh, the emotion on the table.
Alex, help me. That requires a, that requires a second, I presume, right?
I can withdraw the motion if everyone will agree just to vote on it.
Well, so, Councilmember Newsma moves the previous question. Is there a second?
I seconded it.
Okay.
We're voting on.
This is, so Councilmember Newsma made a motion to end debate.
Oh, yeah.
If that.
I'll second it.
Okay, so Councilmember Newsma moves the previous question. Councilmember Isles seconds. So this is not debatable, right? So the clerk will take the roll, and this is, if this passes, then the next vote would be on the underlying motion. This is just a vote, this is like the ending debate vote about to happen.
Point of order, this is also a two-thirds vote, correct? Just for clarification. Thank you.
Thank you for that flag.
Councilmember Harry Caris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns? Councilmember Sufferton? Councilmember Rogers?
No.
Uh, with four voting in favor and four voting against, that doesn't count as a tie, practically speaking, because it's not on the border of being two-thirds, and so there's no tie to be broken, and the motion fails. So we move on to second opportunities with Councilmember Harris with, um, I think, four thirty left.
I need two seconds. So David Livingston, he, he reapplied? So then it was transparent, because he reap- So then it was transparent, because he reapplied. It wasn't just.
I think it was 100% transparent, I think that's inarguable. There could have been even more aggressive proactive communication, and I think that's a great goal for us to strive for, but of course it was transparent.
Yeah, no, most definitely. That was my point, is that one of the people did reapplied. So we just need to refine our process moving forward. You can't penalize somebody in the, in the midst of it. We talk about we don't want to debate or negotiate on days, that's the same thing right here. If we have a lot of questions, I'm going to call the question.
I think if you hadn't spoken, the question, the vote would have happened. But instead, for, with third opportunities, Councilmember Kelly with two and a half minutes left.
So it was transparent to David, but not to the general public. If somebody wanted to apply and they looked at that, they would not see any vacancy posted, and would very well and would be reasonable to assume that the three members were serving a second term. So there was no vacancy, so it was, it was very transparent to David and to the other two, but not to the general public.
Again, with third opportunities, Councilmember Sufferton with three and a half minutes left.
I think we're wrapping up here, but I just like us to walk away from this conversation with an understanding that whether it's a deputy city manager, the clerk's responsibility, we need to have the vacancy and application process for our boards and commissions be much more publicly available and easily understood.
Would the clerk please take the roll? On the motion to approve the appointment of Candace Chow to the Finance and Budget Committee.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
No.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Isles.
Yes.
Councilmember Newsma.
Aye.
Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton.
No.
Councilmember Rogers.
No.
With five voting in favor and three voting against, the motion carries, and the appointment is approved. Councilmember Newsma, do you have a follow-up motion on AP1?
Yes, I move the appointment or the approval of the appointment of Therese McGuire and David Livingston to the Finance and Budget Committee, and Corey King and Stephanie Murray to the Housing and Community Development Committee.
Second.
Councilmember Newsma moves approval of the following four appointments, Therese McGuire and David Livingston to the Finance and Budget Committee, the second of which is a reappointment, and Corey King and Stephanie Murray to the Housing and Community Development Committee. Councilmember Harris seconds. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
No.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Isles.
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma.
Aye.
Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton.
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers.
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries, and those four appointments are also approved. Now on call of the wards, Councilmember Hadekatis.
Just want to announce that October 15th, Ninth Ward Meeting, we will be talking about putting assets to work. Should be interesting discussion. The location is yet to be determined, so there'll be a newsletter going out soon this week, and it'll be posted on the calendar, and it will be hybrid, so that, you know, folks who can't make it can watch later. But looking forward to getting that discussion going.
Councilmember Kelly.
No report.
Councilmember Harris.
No report.
Councilmember Isles.
I'm going to beat Councilmember Newsma to the punch here. We have a joint meeting next Tuesday on the 7th at 6:30 at Robert Crown.
Seven?
Seven, sorry, seven. We are going to be talking about the new strategic housing plan.
What Councilmember Isles said.
Councilmember Newsma? Councilmember Burns? Councilmember Sufferton?
Yeah, Matthew, I guess this is for you particularly, but it's my understanding from a discussion with staff that the draft budget will be released Monday, October 6th. I had previously said Friday, October 3rd, based on information that I believed was correct, and it's Monday, October 6th.
Is Matthew representing the whole press pool? Is that?
Yes, who?
He cut and pasted from my cut and paste from staff information, but it turns out that was erroneous information, Monday, October 6th.
Councilmember Burns.
Just want one public comment, because I continue to kind of hear people, both my colleagues kind of throw cheap shots about Wesley and then people in the community, so I, I have to bring this back up again. The city of Evanston invested in the residents on Wesley. We didn't invest in a way that I don't think anybody in Evanston has given a choice with support, which is to give a million dollars to an organization that we didn't know if they were still organized, that wasn't holding meetings consistently, whose kind of lead person was chronically ill. The, the one that the, the tenant knew more than anybody else who collected the rents, he was terminally ill. I don't think anybody in their right mind in Evanston had given a choice would have supported giving a million dollars to that organization in that position. And so instead of doing that, which wouldn't have been, in my opinion, the right thing for the city to do, instead, we have been subsidizing their rents for the last two years, and for those who continue to need it, we're considering extending that, which has, has still, we've used probably $300,000 to $400,000 in doing it. And so we did invest in them, and I want to make that incredibly clear, because it's a cheap shot to act like we've done nothing. It's not true. In addition to the $300,000, $400,000 that we spent on subsidizing their rents, as a reminder, we also paid for moving assistance, storage assistance, food stipends, for those who had, who needed transportation to, to, to get medicine and go to doctor's appointments, we also gave them, we, we gave them, I don't know what they would be called, but we gave them money or funding for, to, to do ride share. We 100% invested in supporting the community members on Wesley, and the gentleman who continues to come up and speak about it, he's one, he's one of them that was supported. It's, and to act as though this, this, this property is, is also like city-owned, it's not our property. It's privately owned. The last I checked, again, they were, they, somebody was suing the, the owners, and they have to go through that process, but it's not city-owned. It's not up to us to decide kind of what happens, what the future of the site is. It was our responsibility to come in and make sure that those community members were safe, that they didn't get killed by the faulty stairwells and balconies, and to make sure that we made sure is, that, that folks could stay in Evanston and that their rents were subsidized so that they weren't paying more than they were, where they were with their unit in Wesley, and we've done that. So I just, I'm going to continue to, if you continue to make cheap shots, I'm going to have to re-explain this every time, because it's not true. Thank you.
Councilmember Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Councilmember Newsma for joining us for the ribbon cutting at Elks Park. We recently had an excellent opportunity for Ridgeville to do a private-public partnership, where Ridgeville teamed with a not-for-profit called Kaboom, who kind of acts as the general contractor for park restorations and, and new development, and the team from Discover Card, who brought somewhere around 150 volunteers, and a park was built in a day. So that was a great opportunity, great things. And then I will be having a ward meeting on October 16th at the Evanston Animal Shelter. They actually have a very nice little conference room there, and it will give people a chance to pet animals while we talk about the budget.
Councilmember Newsma is recognized to make a motion.
Pursuant to five ILCS compiled statutes 120/2C, I move that the City Council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding litigation and real estate. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act, those exceptions being five ILCS 120/2C, Section 6, and Section 11.
Councilmember Newsma moves that the City Council resolve itself in executive session to discuss the items just enumerated. Councilmember Rogers seconds. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Isles.
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma.
Aye.
Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton.
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers.